Okay, we'll call this meeting into order. Oral call, please.
Councilmember Rivas.
Present.
Councilmember Green.
Present.
Councilmember Beltran.
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Present.
Mayor Meister.
Present. Okay, I'll ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if anybody would like to pray at this time, please come forward. I'm not seeing anyone. I just asked for a moment of silence. All right, please be seated. Okay, oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to give oral communication? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to Schedule Matters. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Fernando's gonna pull up a slide deck that I prepared as an introduction to tonight's budget study session. Thank you for being here tonight for what I promise will be the most exciting budget discussion you'll hear all year. And if it's not, I'll try harder next month as we discuss our capital improvement projects. Tonight's presentation is important. We're not just talking about numbers. We're talking about how to keep delivering the services of our -- delivering the services our community depends on while making sure we don't spend more than we bring in. As interim city manager, I want to be clear. I'm fully committed to fixing the structural challenges that have been building for years. And I'm grateful to be working with a team of department directors who are equally committed to turning things around, no matter how painful the spreadsheets might look. Here's what we're hoping to do tonight. We'll walk you through the proposed operating budget. We'll take some time to explain how to read the worksheets because if you've ever started at line items for more than -- stared at line items for more than five minutes, you know they don't explain themselves. We'll also highlight the major changes by department. And most importantly, we'll give you a chance to ask questions, raise concerns, and share feedback. This is a working session, and while we might not leave here with all the answers, we'll leave with a shared understanding of the challenges ahead. As we work toward a final budget, we are guided by three core principles: reduce costs, improve customer service, and be results-driven. These aren't just slogans we toss around at staff meetings. They serve as our framework for realigning the organization around long-term financial and sustainability and strong community service. A city budget might not be glamorous, but it's powerful. It's a reflection of what we value and what we're willing to invest in. It supports our public safety officers, keeps our roads maintained, and makes sure the trash gets picked up even after we've all forgotten that it was a holiday week. Before we get into the numbers, let's demystify the worksheets a bit. They're not quite beach reading, but they'll tell a story once you know how to read them. You'll see revenues and expenses broken down by department. And each department will be sharing their full-time equivalent or full-time employees. Each line item fits into a category, and we've included year-over-year comparisons to highlight what's changed. You'll also notice different types of funds. The general fund, for example, and the enterprise fund, like water and sewer, and then special revenue funds like Measure I and Measure H. They're like different pockets of the same wallet, just with rules that can say you can only use some of them for gas and others for groceries, for example. This year, our proposed revenues totaled just over $35 million. While proposed expenditures are nearly $37 million, that leaves us with a deficit of about $1.6 million. Now, I know deficit isn't a word that makes people smile, but the point here isn't to panic. It's to acknowledge that we have work to do, and we're going to do that work. This budget is not hiding from the problem. It's built around addressing it head-on. As if $1.6 million deficit weren't enough to keep us up at night, we've also have several long-term liabilities that add to the weight. The golf course has racked up a $3 million enterprise fund deficit. Our risk management fund carries a $10 million liability. And the armory emergency shelter requires around $350,000 a year to operate. And last, the Zalat House, blessed its historic charm, costs us about $40,000 a year to maintain. So looking at the next slides, I wanted to walk you through some important budget comparisons. Starting on the left, Fernando, if you can go to the next -- so if we're starting on page one of the -- page, no, my bad, page three, and then looking at the left. The left are the actuals for the past three years. They're trends that we need to watch closely. They're not the most exciting slides, but they're necessary to understand the reality. And if you start to feel your eyes glaze over, just remember every one of these charts is a chance to catch something before it becomes a bigger problem. And if anyone gets bingo for catching an error in these numbers, we'll name the next pothole after you. So Fernando, if you -- so those are the three-year trend, starting on the left. And then the next slide provides our current year. So go to the next slide. So we have the budget for this fiscal year 24, '25, the year-to-date through the end of December, and then the projected amount for the end of the year. The next slide, if you're wanting to get a snapshot of an actual versus proposed budget, you could look at the actuals for '23, '24. Why -- you may ask, well, why don't we look at '24, '25? Well, the actuals aren't complete, and normally, we don't have the books closed and finalized till September. So we're still working in this fiscal year. Things are changing. Expenses and revenues are still coming in. But if you were to compare the actuals for '23, '24 compared to the proposed, it gives you a good picture. Next slide, Fernando. So in 2017, the city correctly forecasted many of the fiscal challenges we're facing now: pension costs, health deficits, slow revenue growth. They were all clearly laid out. Initial actions we're taking include in some cost-sharing adjustments to our health benefits, but the big structural changes were put off. And now, like an ignored oil change, we're seeing the long-term effects. The forecast was clear. The follow-through probably wasn't. Over the past several years, the city used one-time fixes to close the gap: holding positions vacant, cutting small items, delaying equipment replacement. But those solutions don't last. They just delay the inevitable. Today, the gap is wider, and the options are fewer. We cannot keep putting Band-Aids on broken systems. The time for temporary solutions is over. I'm not here to do this halfway, and I know the council isn't either. Next slide. So how has the budget grown? Our expenses have grown, partly because we're doing more and partly because it costs more to do the same things. We've added staff and police, fire, code enforcement over the years to respond to real needs in the community. Labor and benefit costs have gone up. Inflation and insurance premiums haven't taken the year off either. There are real pressures, but they have to be matched with discipline because no matter how good the intentions, our budget still has to balance. Now, I want to be very clear about this slide. This, the proposed budget you have before we deny, does not include these cost-reduction strategies. These measures have not been implemented, and they're not reflective in the current numbers. What you see here are options, tools in the toolbox that we can use to start fixing the structural deficit. These strategies are being presented tonight for council's discussion and direction, and they present a realistic and achievable ways to begin moving the city forward toward financial stability. Some of these include asking departments to find a minimum of 5% savings, which we've done historically, adjusting fees so we can recover the true costs of providing services, or reorganizing how departments are structured to reduce duplication and improve efficiency. We're also looking at how technology can help us streamline services, how utility savings like adding solar to our facilities can reduce long-term costs, and whether capital projects that aren't urgent can be delayed. These aren't one-size-fits-all answers, but they are a menu of options that, with your input and support, can help close the gap in a responsible way. The goal here is to move away from stop-gap fixes and begin building a structurally sound budget over time. Now, I know someone's thinking, why not just raise revenue? Here's the challenge. Over 65% of our general fund comes from property tax, sales tax, and utility tax. And we'll get into the revenue side more in detail here just in a little bit. We already have Measures I and Measure H supporting public safety and general, the library. Adding any new tax requires voter approval. Meanwhile, state and federal mandates keep raising the cost of doing business without sending a check to help us cover it. So while new revenue may be a conversation for the future, the path forward today is internal reform, efficiency, and smarter budgeting. Our budget is made up of three major parts. Tonight, we're covering the general fund, which supports day-to-day operations. We'll also tonight be covering our enterprise funds, which are run more like a business and are supported by user fees. And we'll also be talking about our special revenue funds, such as Measure H and Measure I, which are restricted to very specific uses. Each has its own rules, and each requires careful planning. But taken together, they form the full financial picture of how we serve the city. We're almost done here with this introduction. We built this budget on the four guiding principles. First, we focused on long-term sustainability and cost containment, not just this year, but in the years to come. Second, we're protecting core services and infrastructure. Third, we're actively looking for efficiencies and new funding. And fourth, we're avoiding the use of one-time funds to pay for ongoing costs. These are the rules we're holding ourselves to, and they are the standards the public has every right to expect from us. In a moment, our department directors will walk you through the details of their budgets. They'll highlight revenues and expenditures, major changes, and staffing levels. The order will follow the printed budget to keep things consistent. And don't worry, I've asked them to limit their presentations to no more than five minutes. After tonight's session, we're not done. We'll continue reviewing the budget with council and staff over the coming days. We'll be meeting daily to find solutions, confirm assumptions, and bring this closer to a balance, bring this closer to a balanced budget. We're committed to getting this right, and we'll return on July 22 for a focused discussion on the capital improvement budget, which will guide the future of our infrastructure investments. Finally, this concludes the presentation portion of the introduction of this budget study session. We'll now begin department presentations, followed by questions and answers. So if we can want to turn to page three, unless you had any comments, mayor or council members, before we get into it?
You know, I do have one. If -- does the council have any questions?
No?
Okay, I just sparked my interest. 65% of the budget is brought in by property, sales, and utility taxes. What is the other 35%? And is that grant funds, or is there other revenues?
Yeah, there's other revenues. So maybe I can, if starting on page three, I can summarize it. Property taxes brings in about $10 million. Sales and use taxes, $7.8 million.
Okay.
Utility tax is $5.2 million. Municipal franchise fees is $1 million. This line item represents an administrative franchise fee charged to the city's sewer refuse.
To the enterprises.
Yep, to the enterprises. Licenses and permits are projected to be about $931,000, led by our building, electrical, and plumbing permits. Intergovernmental revenues, such as grants and reimbursements, is about $638,000. Money and property, which includes investment earnings and rentals, is forecasted at $970,000. Fines and forfeiture are $21,500. And then another kind of interdepartmental charge, which is, which that is titled, is projected to generate $4.4 million.
Okay, Vice Mayor would like to make a comment.
Well, great introduction, Richard. I appreciate it. You know, there's an old saying, "Bad news never gets better with age." And we're going into this year with a $1.6 million on the first layer of a budget deficit. And digging into the numbers, it looks like it's about a $13 million hole that we've dug for ourselves over the last 10 years as well, and I'm hoping to get into that. But I, you know, transparency is the disinfectant. We got to get this out in the open. We got to understand it, and then we can build trust through transparency. I think if we accepted the status quo, and we've been pressing this all year, we probably wouldn't have known a lot of this detail. So I appreciate the time that you've taken and working with all the directors and the staff to put this together so we can understand the challenges that we're facing, and we can tackle this citywide because it's important. The past leadership, maybe 10-plus years, was not paying all the bills. I mean, that's the long and the short of it. We weren't focused on paving the roads. We weren't focused on downtown. There was a number of things that we weren't doing, but raising taxes is not an answer. We are already the most taxed city, I think, among most of the cities in California. Our taxes are higher than San Francisco. We have to figure out how to close these gaps with efficiencies. We have to figure out how to close these with some improvement strategies. And I know we can do it. It's just gonna, it's gonna be a big bite because we got to make up for 10 years of some questionable financial practices from the past leadership. And I'm just gonna leave that out there. I think that there's another saying, too. When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. So this council, and I can speak as a vice mayor, is gonna work to fix these problems and work with the staff and everyone to fill in the holes from the past councils and the past leadership of the last 10 years that have dug this hole.
Vice Mayor, could you clarify a little more into the $13 million that you're talking about as far as that hole?
Well, just, I think what I would say is, it's very simple. We all know that the golf course costs $350,000 a year, but we haven't been paying the bill.
For 10 years.
For 10 years. So this is over $3 million in arrears, deferred. I think at the federal government, we don't like that they're spending all our money, right? With $36 trillion in debt. At the state government, we don't like that they're spending all our money. There are $1 trillion in unfunded liabilities. At the city government, we have some control. We should not be deferring and having unfunded liabilities at the city level like they do at the state and the federal level. We got to be accountable to the people, and that takes good leadership to do that. And I think that the other opportunity is, healthcare's gone up for everybody in the city, not just people that work in the city, but everybody in the city. And so we're asking the people to suck it up, but we ourselves, as government, we have to figure out how to address those increases, too. And we got to, can't put it off for 10 years and accumulate $10 million in deferred payments. That's just bad business, bad finance, bad leadership.
So thank you for that clarification, yes. And the $10 million you're talking about is on health insurance for city employees? We have a deficit around $1 million a year. Is that correct in saying that, Mr. Tree?
Well, the risk management fund does include health insurance for employees and retirees, but it also encompasses workers' comp that were self-funded. It also includes litigation costs for cases that were defending the city, essentially. When it comes to the health insurance, we're, yeah, we're burning about $1.5 million.
$1.5 million a year, okay. So these are things that we're recognizing, and this also was caught in the audit and things that we have to change and address going forward with the city of Porterville. So continue on. Does the council have any other comments?
I have a few comments, Mr. Tree. Thank you very much for that presentation. And also, I echo a lot of sentiments of what Mr. Vice Mayor said in regards to the 10 years, but I think it's a little bit longer than that, maybe 15 or so. But in either case, help me understand this on page three, where it says, item 4018, where it says fiscal year '21, '22, fiscal year '22, '23.
That is tribal contribution.
That is tribal contribution.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry to jump in there, Mr. Tree, but that's what that is.
That's what that is. That's why they're blank. Is that correct?
Yes, that just came in.
All right. Then I just, I just, you answered my question. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did I answer that correctly? Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions as we move on? Okay, Mr. Tree, you have the helm.
Sounds good. Well, we went right through the revenue side as I listed kind of all the additional fees. We'll turn our attention to now to the expense side. And this is gonna be, I'm gonna continue talking. The first section on the expenses, the city council, page eight. The proposed budget for city council is $272,000. The personnel services, the $4,000, this reflects the $20 and $25 per meeting stipends for the city council members. The other expenses totaling $268,200. Wanted to highlight a couple of things for you. So the line item titled Professional and Temp Services, $88,000, that is the cost of our annual audit, and that increases about 4% to 5% per year. You'll notice that previous council members that were on the books dated back to 2021, there's a $5,000 discretionary fund per council member. Those funds that are listed for particular council members, like Councilman Green, I'll use as an example, is the cost of the cellphone and computer laptop that was purchased for him to serve as a council member. That's an example of costs.
I have a question. We said that some of this was identified in 2017 in the introduction, and I think that's great. We did identify it. That was eight years ago, I guess. But with this item, the audit item, is, this is, it's concerning to me that we do an annual audit and we spend that kind of money, and yet we're still haven't addressed some of these structural issues for the last several years.
They didn't catch it over the past 10 years?
I don't know. I don't, that's troubling to me.
Well, and I can ask, the Finance Director can give some detail on what the auditor looks at during an annual audit. They not necessarily look at structural issues sometimes for an unfunded liability. Like in our case this year, they identified two funds that were, we needed to start taking action on. But maybe, Janie, if you can describe a little bit more detail on what an annual audit encompasses.
So the auditors work on reviewing all of our financial statements, making sure that we meet reporting requirements and compliance. Also, they prepare the single audit for us for federal awards that we receive, which is a separate audit. If there are any items that are recorded incorrectly, they will let us know. And with your question about the, this has been going on for 10 years and they've never brought it up. So I'm not sure that this was brought up in the past or not, but it was brought up in our most recent audit, which was fiscal year '23, '24. So I immediately let city manager and assistant city manager know about it so that we can address it. But really, they're there to make sure we're meeting compliance and reporting requirements and year-end requirements as well.
Thank you, Finance Director. I don't, I don't have any. Do you have any more input on that? Very clear, thank you.
Yeah. Mayor and council members, I wanted to highlight a couple other line items that you may be interested in and also the public. The publication and dues were budgeted $24,000. That's specifically for our membership in the League of California Cities. The $100,000 that we historically budget for the council in the special purpose account is available at the council's discretion. And then finally, there's some additional meeting, utility, and administrative expenses that round out the city council budget.
So annually, we get a $5,000, each one of us gets a $5,000 expenditure.
That is correct.
Gotcha. That past city manager told me that that wasn't true, so I just, that's good to know.
If I can add, he told me the same thing.
Yeah.
My understanding is it goes towards, we needed ink, printers, cellphones, computers. Not that it's for us to spend outside of our duties of city council.
Janie, is there, or Finance Director, is there rules attached or strings attached to this dollar, the $5,000 of that nature?
Like Councilmember Beltran said, it is to be used for meeting expenses or for city council expenses related to city council business.
Correct. Gotcha. Has there been in the past where council members used those funds to make a donation to local organizations?
There has not, not that I'm aware of.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
If there's not any more questions on the city council portion of the budget, we'll now turn the page to the community promotion budget. This proposed budget totals $398,000. Of that, $109,811 reflects staff time dedicated to supporting civic events, such as parades and ceremonies. Do want to highlight a couple key programs within the community promotion budget? Down, let's see, the cannabis, excuse me, the community benefit program, which is the city's cannabis program. This initiative is expected to generate $70,000 to be reinvested into the community, particularly focused on performing and visual arts. A call for project was currently open. It may have closed now, allowing community members and organizations such as the Barn Theater to submit funding requests. The other $78,000 in other expenses supports the city's Wall of Fame and Military Banner Program. It also covers logistical costs, such as porta potty rentals for civic events throughout the year. The $90,000 for publication and dues, it's broken up into a couple categories. Lafco is $24,000 annually. Our fee for the Telleri County Association of Governments is $26,000. Telleri County Economic Development Corporation is $35,000, and the Sequoia Tourism Council is $3,500. Any questions on the community promotion?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Moving on to the temporary library budget. This, I do want to call attention that this is the insurance proceeds. There is some expenses being charged towards the insurance proceeds. Right now, the budget is approximately $210,000. And it's exclusively used for the operation of the temporary library. There's two accounts or two line items. The first one, the lease of the temporary building at $160,000 annually, and then library book purchases at $50,000 annually. This is one that we're discussing that potentially should This is one that we're discussing that potentially should be moved into the General Fund and not be utilizing insurance proceeds moving forward.
Question is, how much longer will the insurance pay? Is it through this year or next year? When are we gonna run out of funds for that?
So, currently, we have about three point four million. That's not including any amounts that we're expected to be receiving, but we're hoping to leave those in there for the construction of the new library, whatever council decides to do.
So, we can continue to fund this, but that does come out of the fund to build the library, correct? Okay. Thank you, Janie.
So, that'll be another cost onto the General Fund? Or is that, well, we would have to move those funds to Parks and Leisures, but?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Green, did you have a question?
No, Ed asked the question I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the March Storms Budget, this is the budget, it's kind of the remaining budget from the two thousand twenty-three March Storms. It is being funded or reimbursable through FEMA. There's some expenses, the remaining expenses for this activity, such as Personnel Services at a hundred and twenty-three thousand and change, and other expenses at three hundred and twenty-one thousand. And there's some capital outlay of twelve thousand, six hundred. We're hoping, things are still progressing with FEMA and we're hoping to close this out this coming fiscal year. Any other comments on the March Storm?
The only comment I have is that we have one project that still has not been obligated, and we still have not heard on FEMA whether they're approving that or not.
Which project is that?
That is gonna be the River Channel Correction Project. It's one of the large projects.
The what?
How much is that one?
I think we had estimated about three point five million.
Excuse me, what was the project named?
It's the River Channel Correction.
For educational purposes, some capital projects are, this is an operating budget that we're looking at tonight, and capital projects will be at our meeting in July, and that's where that would be listed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the next section for our Administrative Annual Budget. The first, I'll talk about the first area of the Administrative Services Budget, which is the City Manager's Office. The total proposed budget is six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two. This budget supports five positions, though one is currently vacant, which is the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, which is currently vacant, the Assistant City Manager, which is partially funded from this budget. We have an Administrative Analyst, which we utilize as our Public Information Officer, and Executive, and an Executive Assistant. Let's see. If you look at the three-year trend, there has been some additional staffing that has been added over the years, including the Deputy City Manager and the Administrative Analyst. That's been added to increase organizational capacity, improve public communication, and to assist with cross-departmental project management. The current vacancy in the Deputy City Manager position provides temporary salary savings but may impact internal capacity depending on workload and strategic needs, so, something that we're evaluating. The other operating expenses, just typical operating expenses such as office and computer supplies, meeting and training expenses, and professional memberships, and some minor equipment and utility costs. Moving on to the City Clerk, and I've asked Juliana Andrade to provide this next section.
Yes, thank you. The City Clerk's Office consists of two full-time employees, which support transparent governance. The budget for the division consists of the regular line items, as you see, the salaries, benefits, equipment, office supplies, professional services. These line item budgets usually stay the same from year to year. The account that fluctuates the most, so you'll notice in the line items, is the Professional Services Line, which pays for election services. So, if you go by the year-to-year, you can see that this line item increased during election years. For this current twenty-four, twenty-five, we did leave about ten thousand extra in there, or we budgeted about ten thousand dollars just in case any costs come out of the Charter Review Committee, but we're not expecting to see any impact at this fiscal year. And that's really all I have for that section unless council has any questions.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, for the next one, is our Human Resources Account. So, Human Resources Office consists of four full-time employees with one currently vacant. This division is tasked with the recruitment, retention, and support of the city's four hundred-plus employees. Again, this budget consists of regular line items like salaries, benefits, equipment, and office supplies. This budget has a couple of line items that do fluctuate depending on circumstances. The Professional Service Line item was increased last year after the council approved the purchase of NeoGov, which is a recruitment software that has greatly improved recruitment. This account also pays for employee appeals, investigations, and other personnel-related matters that increase based on the number of claims we receive in the fiscal year. Another area that fluctuates is the Training Expense Line item, which pays for tuition reimbursement that employees receive for continued education. This expense changes depending on how many employees participate in this program. There was also some changes in the salary and benefits which were impacted during two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-four when the department went through reorganizations and became the Administration Department. So, that consisted of what City Manager Rich Tree just said, the Assistant City Manager, Admin Services Manager, and Records Coordinator in two thousand twenty-two, and in two thousand twenty-four with the addition of the Admin Analyst Two and the Chief Deputy City Clerk Position. Again, I'm available if council has any questions in that section.
I'm not seeing any.
I do have a comment, though. Go ahead, Adrian. I just wanted to say, I mean, it's pretty obvious, salary, benefits, utilities, right? So, that seems to be the biggest line items in the normal budgeting, and we're talking about some other peripheral things, but that seems to be the trend here, right?
That's for most of the departments.
Yeah.
Did you have a question, Councilman?
No, he, Mr. Vice Mayor answered.
Now that, okay, we can move on.
There's no need to ask the same question.
I agree.
Moving on to the City Attorney's Budget. You can see in the three-year trend, it's hovered between a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, both in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and the proposed budget. Staff has budgeted two hundred thousand. Happy to answer any questions regarding the City Attorney's Budget.
For this year, we're projected to spend a hundred and fifty?
That's based on the projection, yeah. Now, the year-to-date through December reflects a much smaller amount, but I think, I don't know if the City Attorney is up to date on their?
They, she was not, so, we caught up after January. There were quite a few invoices that came through to catch that up.
Okay. Is there any other questions on it?
All right, we're gonna dig into the Finance Department, and I'll turn the time over to Janie.
Like Vice Mayor said, with Finance, IT and the other divisions under Finance, it's, majority of our budget is gonna be for Personnel. For the Finance, we have eight staff covered under the Finance Division, which is ninety-five percent of our budget. All the other line items are gonna be our standard operating expenditures.
So, I have a question with that on Personnel, just because we see almost double in the cost for Personnel. Were there, was there a staffing shorting in your department beforehand?
We did. So, we had the Assistant Finance Director that was vacant and also one accountant position that was vacant. So, we recently promoted our accountant to Assistant Finance Director. So, that leaves us now with two accountant vacancies, which have been vacant for over a year.
Oh, so we still have two vacancies?
We have two currently. One was vacant for over a year. And prior to that, the Assistant Finance Director had also been vacant for about a year. We do have a new accountant coming on board on July first.
Okay.
I have a question. Can you explain to me, why do I keep on seeing the Professional Temp Service on each department?
That would cover, so for Finance, that would cover any part-time help that we had acquired from, like, a temp agency, because we were short-staffed also, some of the account clerks were vacant.
Okay, so these are individuals?
Part-time assistants, but for other departments, like engineering or planning, that would be consultant agreements.
Okay, thank you.
And just trying to comprehend, because we're at one vacancy now, but we're still, we're spending just under a million dollars a year in the Finance Department, and compared to twenty-two, we're around half a million dollars a year, so?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, we were?
Six twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And then, this year, we're projected to be at six hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay.
And then, our budget, proposed budget, is nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's taking into account all of the positions that are allocated, not necessarily filled.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other questions before we move on to IT?
I'm not seeing any.
No, go ahead.
Okay, and then, with IT, the same thing with IT. We went from two staff to five now. There was one IT analyst that was vacant, again, for just over a year. And then, we also moved the IT analyst that was under Police Department over to Finance. So, now we have five staff under the IT Division. And they do charge their time to Measure I if they do do any work for public safety.
And no vacancies in the IT Department?
Currently, we don't have any vacancies in IT. And again, with the computer equipment maintenance, there is an increase in that budget. The IT Manager did say there's been an increase in computer equipment between, anywhere between five and twelve percent, depending on the type of equipment.
Any other questions on that?
I have a question. How many are you utilizing the Measure I fund for your, for your direct?
IT staff only charges to Measure I if they are doing anything at the Police Department. So, it's not a hundred percent of anyone's salary. It's just on a per-hour basis, as they're needed.
So, it's a as-needed basis?
As-needed basis.
Okay, I think we're good to move on.
Okay. And then, with General Services, this is going to be our purchasing and general, anything that doesn't fall into the Finance, IT, or Utility Billing Division falls in this category. This is, we have one full-time account clerk out of this budget. And the other items are standard. You'll see that the Utilities is the larger budget here at a hundred thousand, which includes Edison, gas, the fax line. We also recently took over the Utilities under this budget for the vacant Lindsay Animal Shelter facility. And I think that's it for that unless anybody has any questions on this one.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. And then, Utility Billing, we have five full-time staff, which includes the one Utility Billing Supervisor and four account clerks, which makes up about eighty-five percent of the Utility Billing Division. The large line item here, which is your other expenses, is gonna be merchant fees related to the electronic checks that the city receives, and also InCode Auto Pay Services for our Utility Billing customers. And we don't see it here, but in the next meeting when we go over Capital Improvement Plan, we do plan on upgrading our InCode as well. So, you'll be seeing that in the Capital Improvement Plan meeting.
Thank you, Finance Director. I'm not seeing any questions. We can move on.
Yeah, we're gonna turn the time over to the Police Department.
Thank you, City Manager. So, first and foremost, I would like to give, I'll try to make it brief. I know everybody's looking at me. Everybody tell me to not talk too long, but I need to give council a quick snapshot of the Police Department's General Fund, but, and how we allocate the monies. But in doing that, I'm gonna have to talk a little bit about Measure H and I also as I go through this, because it all coincides with how we allocate our funds and how we spend in different accounts. So, obviously, the largest PD budget is General Fund, which we're discussing now, but we have similar breakdowns in both Measure H and I, our other two budgets. The largest portion of our budgets are obviously salary, overtime, and benefits, as we can see from these sheets. The rest of the proposed budgets cover our operational costs to run the department efficiently and effectively, and also to fund our vehicle depreciation account. This proposed budget in General Fund, salary, benefits, overtime, is about eleven million, one oh nine, one twelve, and the operating costs are one, two, three, four, zero, zero, zero. This funds about fifty-nine General Fund positions. Those are sworn positions, and then another thirty General Fund positions for support staff. So, for General Fund, that's a total of eighty-nine in that account. Historically, throughout the fiscal year, the Police Department Command Staff and I will look at every expenditure and define its use. We conduct a breakdown in those accounts as we get those invoices that need to be paid through our General Fund. We use a percentage breakdown at the PD on each one of these invoices, and it's a formula. And we follow that for General Fund, Measure H, and I. In purchase of things for the entire department, about seventy percent is spent out of General Fund, and then eighteen out of I, and twelve out of Measure H. And I'll give you an example of that. That example is like if we bought a computer for our report-writing room or other office supplies, it would be charged off seventy, eighteen, and twelve. So, seventy percent out of General Fund, eighteen out of I, and twelve because it is for the use of the entire Police Department, not just for a General Fund position. And then, we also have another breakdown for, if it's just for sworn police officers, Personnel General Fund would be sixty-five percent, I twenty-one, and Measure H fourteen percent. An example of that is if we were buying firearms or firearm ammunition, we buy that usually in bulk, and it's defined as that aforementioned percentages. It's a breakdown on how we allocate when we pay that invoice, because it's for sworn only. And then, obviously, if it's for a single employee that falls under General Fund, it's funded a hundred percent out of that budget. An example of that is if we had an officer that was attending a post-certified training, a mandatory training, and he was being, his position is being funded under General Fund, then that would be, that training would be paid for a hundred percent out of the General Fund for that training budget. And then, moving on, obviously, I mentioned vehicle depreciation. The Police Department does operate a robust vehicle fleet, and we work those vehicles twenty-four-seven. That includes marked vehicles, unmarked vehicles, detective vehicles, and animal control vehicles. We also have a mobile command post, and then also a state-of-the-art tactical vehicle that we operate. And actually, in a matter of days, we'll have a new state-of-the-art crime scene investigations unit that was just checked off in Wisconsin by the Assistant Chief and Staff. We also deploy traffic trailers. You see those. That's basically as a deterrent and data collection for high collision areas. With that all being said, this year, over the last couple of years, we have tried to move a lot of General Fund monies for vehicle depreciation, vehicle maintenance, fuel costs, out of General Fund and into Measure I, saving taxpayer money in General Fund and saving that money. We have transitioned to fully implementing that to this budget. We have transitioned to fully implementing that to this budget cycle. I requested moving four-hundred thousand in General Fund monies to increase Measure I for vehicle depreciation, which will save the General Fund monies in reducing the PD's General Fund budget in that area, as you can see allocated on the spreadsheet. The Police Department budgets vehicle depreciation each year to replace and schedule vehicle replacement in recent years. The outfitting of vehicles and purchase of vehicles increased an average of forty-eight thousand dollars per vehicle to around sixty thousand plus per vehicle. Pretty significant increase over the last four or five years. That's in addition to our rising fuel costs, and that obviously increases our operational costs because we use these vehicles twenty-four-seven, which also increases vehicle maintenance and those costs. And you can see those as we go through these budgets, how that has increased. But you also can see that it's zeroed out on that sheet, and that's because we moved the rest of that money to fully fund the vehicles out of Measure I and Measure H now, completely for our fleet. In addition, the Police Department focuses the highest professional standards on police training. A lot of this training is mandated by the California Peace Officer Standard of Training, and we also send officers and staff to specialized training for their assignment, whether it be investigations, the tactical team, records unit, dispatchers. They all need specialized training. So we focus on that. Although that increases some cost to our training budget, it also increases efficiency but reduces liability within the Police Department when we send personnel to these trainings and events. Training, some, most are mandated. With that said, you'll see a slight increase in that account, but remember that the state does reimburse us for a lot of these trainings. Now, those reimbursements for certified training, we fill out reimbursement forms on all our training at the Police Department. Regardless if we think we're going to get reimbursed or not, there is a reimbursement form turned in for all training. But that goes directly back into the General Fund. We ask for a set amount of funds for our training line item, and then any reimbursements go back into General Fund, not back to the Police Department when we get those. Also, we do participate in several public safety grants, which provides monies, monies for positions. Police Department currently has funds for two community service officers with grant funding from the United States Department of Justice of Community Oriented Policing, or COPS grant. This funding is applied each year, and we anticipate receiving approximately a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars this year in that grant. We also participate in a Traffic, California Office of Traffic Safety Grant, OTS. Those usually come to council when we ask for permission for, to apply for those, and then also again, when we're approved to accept that. Council sees those. That post helps with offsetting personnel costs and overtime. It also is a, another grant along with that one called the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, or STEP grant. Obviously, the goal of this, these grants are to reduce persons killed or injured in traffic accidents, speeding, red light violations, and all kinds of reoccurring primary collision factors that occur in the, in the city to reduce cost, anticipation, or what we just got approved for that, a month or two ago, that council accepted was a hundred-and-four-thousand, five-hundred dollars for this budget cycle, and they're on the federal fiscal year, which will start October first. We do have one person assigned with ARPA funding, Funding, our Crisis Intervention Specialist, or she's assigned to SMART. And then we also have AB-286 Funds Grants, DMV Funding, or Auto Theft Funding. That is actually DMV funds. We get a dollar off of every registration fee towards specific programs for auto theft. This year, council approved us recently to accept sixty thousand dollars in those fundings that I applied for through AB-286, which will fund.
Five years, Dominique?
Five years of additional flock cameras, LPRs in our city that we will pretty much have all the entrance and exits of the city covered to detect and deter crime and auto theft, violent crime, persons that are wanted. With that, those are the large items that you'll see in the General Fund, and I am happy to answer any questions council may have, or go line through line if they, if you wish.
I felt like you went line by line.
Almost.
I, I have one question, if I may. For the officer with the ARPA funds and, and those funds drying up, and I know you, you take care of your, your officers in uniform, and we don't want to lose anyone. What's the plan for them when the ARPA funds dry up?
So this position, the, the funds are funded through the end of this year, Janie? The end of this year, and then we will have to come to council to look at the funding source for that, whether it be General Fund, Measure I, or Measure H. It just depends on what council would like to do with that. Just to add to that, she is, she, her and one of our other officers were the original persons that, that started SMART, and we actually got her from, she worked at full-time as a supervisor-manager for the Transition Center, and, and we recruited her two or three years ago, two years ago, to come over, and she's an extremely important part of that team.
It's an asset. Gotcha. That was really all I had out of that. Is it, any other questions?
No, it's, it's great to identify the future expense. It's probably a hundred-and-fifty K or something in that neighborhood, probably.
Yeah, it's approximately that. I don't, I don't have her salary and benefits from me, but it's going to be close to that.
Any other questions for the Police Chief? I'm not seeing any. Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, good job, Chief. I know I asked a lot of you to, to try to keep it at five minutes. My stopwatch started a little late, but I think you're pretty close. Let's see if the Fire Chief can do any better with his budget.
Well, thank you. Similar to the Police Chief, I'd like to give just a general overview of my budget to give you more depth and understanding. Fire Department operates out of a overall budget of roughly eleven million dollars, with half of that coming from the General Fund, and the other half coming from Measure H and Measure I. Out of the eleven million dollars, roughly eighty-five percent of all combined funds make up, are made up of salary and benefits. So eighty-five percent of my eleven million budget, salary and benefits. Other fifteen percent is the maintenance and operations. And that varies from General Fund, Measure I, and Measure H. So as we go through each of those, I'll provide that information to you. Fire Department operates with sixty-one personnel, thirty-seven of which are funded from the General Fund, twelve from Measure H, and twelve from Measure I. A large portion of my maintenance and operation, operations budget is my vehicle maintenance, which includes my equipment replacement. Out of the Fire Department, we depreciate twenty-two apparatus, which varies from our ladder truck, our engines, patrols, staff vehicles, a mobile command vehicle, and various other pieces of equipment. There's been quite an increase to our, to the cost of our vehicles, similar to the, the Police Department. You know, when I started my career, a ladder truck was, you know, a million dollars, which was a lot. An engine was five-hundred thousand or, or less. Actually, that wasn't when I started my career. That was probably ten years ago. Now we're talking about two million dollars for a ladder truck, a million dollars for an engine, three-hundred thousand dollars for a patrol. And then our staff vehicles, once we outfit them with radios, some command and control equipment, we're, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. So the cost has gone up substantially. We also depreciate some of our, our other items. We depreciate our SCBAs, our self-contained breathing apparatus, as well as our fill station, our radios, our antennas, our repeaters, some of those larger ticket items that don't come up every year, but periodically, we're needing to purchase new equipment, as well as we depreciate our, our grounds and station maintenance. That consists of three fire stations and one training center. And you know, the, really the guiding documents for our budget and our budget requests are the SART report and the NIOSH report following the library fire, as well as our standard-to-cover and strategic plan, which we created several years ago with a, with input from our internal and external stakeholders. And that, that uses industry standards, mandates, and best practices. So beginning with our, our General Fund overview, like I expressed earlier, fifty percent of my overall budget comes from the General Fund, and out of my General Fund, ninety-six percent of that is salary and benefits. Only four percent of that is maintenance and operations. So very little of my maintenance and operations budget comes from my General Fund. It comes, the bulk of it comes from Measure I, and then some of it comes from Measure H. Like the Police Chief discussed with moving his vehicle replacement fund this budget year into Measure I, we did that several years ago, where our vehicle depreciation and vehicle maintenance was moved into Measure I. So you'll see under, under our vehicle maintenance that there is no cost associated with that. The, the other increases that I'm asking for in my General Fund, or just the cost of doing business, increases to utilities and some of the other day-to-day operations. I'd be happy to expand on any, any line item if you'd like.
Well, I, what, do you have any shortages in staff? Are you at sixty-one personnel that's fully staffed?
No, we're, we're still working towards increasing our staffing. The, really the catalyst for all that change is, is dependent on our station remodels. We, we have limited space for our personnel, so the remodels will help add bedrooms, add space for those individuals. So we are very close to reaching that, that, that target and number of our staffing. But we don't have the ability to add too many more bodies to get to that, that threshold that we're looking for until our station remodels are completed.
Gotcha. And then as far as the structural change for inflation on the vehicle maintenance, have you already made those changes? You, you're good at where we're at. Obviously, we're going to see that in Measure H, Measure I in future here in the meeting, but are you okay with where we're at on that?
Yeah, I've asked for some slight increases in Measure I this year, but we've, we've had to, when the vehicles are purchased, they've, they were, the depreciation was projected on a trajectory that they were on typically, right? So much of a percentage each year was calculated into what the cost was going to be over a ten- or twenty-year depreciation. Those numbers after COVID went, went out the window. So the, there was a lot of catch-up and increased funding that we needed to add to get us, keep us on track for twenty years. At the end of a twenty-year lifecycle of an engine, it's, it's been through its paces. It's not, there's not much left use, usefulness of that vehicle. Our patrols are on a ten-year replacement cycle, and our staff vehicles are on a ten-year, but our truck, our heavies, we call them, our, our large engines and truck, they're on a twenty-year cycle. So we are on, we have made some corrections within those funds to be on the right path. But I have a, you'll see when we get into Measure I, there was, was over slightly in budget this year. That's why I'm asking for a increase for Measure I in my vehicle maintenance.
Gotcha. And then Police Chief, just for your staffing, how many officers are we short? I apologize for not asking that when you were on deck.
Yeah, currently, we have five police officer openings. We have four dispatch positions, which we have a recruitment that just closed. We have well over twenty applicants for those positions. One Chief of Police Administrative Assistant, which that process just closed. We have over thirty applicants for that position.
Wow.
One Animal Control Services Supervisor position. That recruitment just closed. We have well over thirty applicants for that position.
So these ones are going to be filled?
Yeah, those are in the process. Obviously, we have an open recruitment for police officers.
Yeah.
But currently, right now, we have five current openings.
And four dispatchers.
So, so for percentage-wise, ninety-four percent of our allocated positions, or allocated staffing positions is where we're at. We're at about ninety-four percent. I would anticipate probably, if no one leaves, by the end of the summer or the fall, we should be close to a hundred percent staffing. I, I, I'm, as long as no one leaves or no one retires, which I do have potential retirements coming up, but we'll still be close to a hundred percent.
Thank you for that, and, and we don't expect you to predict the human factor, right? So, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I think I misunderstood on, on your question. So you wanted to know if I have any current vacancies within my ranks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about future positions we'd be, be looking to add. So out of the sixty-one, that is if I'm at full staff. Currently, I have two Battalion Chief vacancies, which we are going to be running recruitment, closed promotion internally, so that those two Battalion Chiefs will come from the rank of Captain, which will create two Captain vacancies, and there's a trickle-down effect. On the backend of that trickle-down effect, we'll have roughly five firefighter positions. I have three firefighter vacancies and two that'll be created by the attrition of moving people into promoted spots.
I got you. Are there any other questions for, for the Fire Chief?
Yes, sir. I have, those are, those will be full-time positions, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I'm not seeing any. Great job, Chief. Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Chiefs. We're now going to shift our attention to the other side of the room. We're going to lead off with our Community Development Director, Claudia.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Okay, so we'll start with the Planning Division. So the Community Development Division, Department has four divisions. The first one is the Planning, which is our planners that help with businesses coming in, trying to open up, or housing developments. We help with the plan check and just the process of applying and the, leading the PRC, which is the Project Review Committee, helping review business license, just a little bit of everything. And so that's one division. I'll go over the other ones next, but that's the Economic Development Division, the Housing Division, and the GIS Division. So for the Planning Division, we have, so everybody, I have thirteen team members, and everybody is paid from different funds, so no, nobody is a hundred percent General Fund. We have about twenty percent that, of everyone's salary in different percentage ranges that come from either enterprise funds, the grant funds, or just capital projects that have fees associated with them. So all of those, not, not one person is a hundred percent General Fund. It just depends on the task that they're assigned and how they charge. So anytime they're working on a project, they have to charge their time associated with that project, or that grant, or that loan, or whatever it is. So that's how we distribute the, the source. So for Planning, we have four positions. One is vacant, which is our City Planner, but we have a part-time contract City Planner to help with that right now. And we will have a, the Planning Tech also vacant here pretty soon. But other than that, the salaries make up about eighty percent of the, the, the budget for Planning. The rest is general, nothing fancy there, just operating costs. And then on the Professional and Temp Services, I think that's where our highest amount is, and that's with all the on-call consultants that we have, or planning a related large documents like our housing element, our development orders, updates, or anything like that that isn't funded already, or wasn't anticipated because of new changes that need to be made or requested, depending on development that's coming in, and annexations and all of that. And there, we've had, you know, a lot of those documents that you've seen come through. And that's probably the largest one there. Everything else is pretty standard. If you have questions on this one, I can answer any line item that you have questions on, and if not, I'll move on to the other, next division.
Any questions? Go ahead, Director.
All right. So our Economic Development Division is the next one there, and that one is composed of two staff and a manager that oversees that department and the Housing Division as well. So this is the, the portion of the Community Development that does all the business engagement, the retention efforts. And, you know, this is a division that is also helping with all the business loans, business grants, even if they're not paid out of our, you know, our current funding sources. So for example, the cannabis one that is, was mentioned earlier, that grant, we're the ones that, you know, are taking care of intake of these applications. They'll eventually go through the Cannabis Committee and get back to council approval, but for right now, we're the ones taking that. But for right now, we're the ones taking that because we're familiar with the businesses and the process of approving those loans and going through that. But again, it's not just a general fund. They also are paid out of CDBG because a lot of those loan programs are CDBG-based. And I, we don't have anything that is as far as like fees that we charge for that. So that's pretty much it. Also very standard there, mostly based on salaries and benefits, and the rest is minimal. Any questions there?
What is the publication and dues just?
So that one is, it includes like the Choose Porterville websites, Mighty One-Ninety. There is memberships to like CalEd and ICSC. Those are all economic development professional organizations. And then also our software, that's the bulk of it is the, it's about thirty-six thousand. And it's our recruitment software that we use and that produces a lot of the demographics, data points. So when there's somebody coming into town and they're like, what about this property? What can we do with it there? What what can I build there? I'm interested, this is who I represent, would we be a good fit? And that really helps us kind of gather all the data for them and present a plan to them, saying, look, this is how what Porterville can offer for you. And that helps us gather all those data points.
Gotcha. So this is kind of the tool. When I reached out to your department, someone was talking about trying to bring a paintball course. And we turned him over and you helped him direct. But this was the tool that helped bring that knowledge to the minimum properties in town. Thank you. Is there any questions for Director?
All right, and then GIS, as you know, it's our information, geographical information systems. That's the data platform that is used for the mapping. So every department touches that. And so that is one position and it's funded. It's not included anywhere there because it's funded by the whole city. So Enterprise, Public Works, PD, anyone and everyone funds that position because everyone has a little piece of it. So again, it's not fully general fund. It's pretty much a lot of the different departments that are funding it. But they sit within planning because normally that's who GIS sits with. And they help basically, you know, our emergency or dispatch, our public works trucks, all those other things. Everyone kind of, even like our conflict maps for council. So anything like that comes out of our department as well. And that one, there's no expenses associated individually. There's not a budget for it directly because it kind of is embedded with the planning one. And everybody else's. And then the last one is housing, but that one, you'll find it under special services, special revenue section. I think it's page like eighty-eight, so I can wait to present the Housing Division then there. But I'll give you a small intro now. It's basically all the hub of all the grants and housing programs that we have. And so that's like you've heard at City Council, the Community Development Block Grant. That's the bulk of that funding. That's the one we are entitled to. And that one is two, three positions. Two of them are currently filled and one is vacant. But I'll, I can speak to that budget when we get to that page.
Thank you.
Moving on to our engineering and project management, I'll turn the time over to Javier.
All right, thank you. For engineering and project management, we keep it short and sweet. It's we just a one-page summary here. In total, our department has, there's twenty-two of us. In the Building Division, there are seven employees. They handle all of the permits that are submitted for any type of private property development. And they also handle the plan check and inspection of those. There are times on complex commercial reviews that we send out to a third-party plan checker for the building code sections. And but the rest are done in-house, such as engineering, fire, planning. And they're a hundred percent general fund because of that, the work, you know, the type of work that they do. For engineering, we have like two subsets in there. We have eleven staff members there. Seven are dedicated to design and counterwork. The majority of those have charged sixty to seventy percent towards projects, so only thirty to forty percent towards the general fund. And they're tasked with doing designs in-house for street rehabilitation, utilities that go along with that, concrete-type jobs, anything that we're doing in the public right-of-way that we can handle in-house. And then the other four members under engineering are under construction management. And they'll perform all the inspections and construction coordination of any work within the right-of-way, both capital projects and building permits. And then we have four other staff members that are in an oversight administrative role. And so we kind of have our hand in in each of those areas. And then we have three vacant positions. And, you know.
What are those vacancies, Director?
Sure, one is an assistant city engineer. So that would be the the third highest position in our department. It's difficult to find somebody there since they require a license as a registered civil engineer. And so it's it's been tough to try and compete with other agencies that are larger or other firms just because of the the pay. But we do have that position there. And then an additional administrative aide and an administrative assistant. Yeah.
Keep rolling.
All right. Again, our our expenses there are pretty straightforward with staff's salaries and benefits. Let's see, we do have occasional overtime. Those are usually reserved for our our engineer inspectors when they're doing street work. You know, here recently with main, the Main Street and Villa Street reconstructions, contractors wanted to get a certain portion of work done and they had to stay until six, seven, eight P.M. And so our inspectors would hang out until that portion of the job was completed so that we can have that that without having, leaving holes in the road is what we usually reserve that for. Let's see, because of the number of inspectors we have, that's where why one of our amounts is pretty high there on the vehicle maintenance. Pretty much every inspector has a vehicle, says it can go out and about to different job sites throughout the day. Our computer equipment maintenance consists of some of our, the main software that we use for design, like AutoCAD, Civil 3D, workstation maintenance, Office 360, EnterGov, which is our permitting software that we're trying to revamp. And our ArcGIS portion that uses to look up the GIS data. Let me see. Other equipment maintenance, we do pay a subscription for a GPS antenna that we use for surveying when it's minimal and small scale. Recently here, we did some surveying in-house at the Drager Prop for the Fire Department. And so we do try and do some of that in-house when we, when the scope is appropriate. Let me see, for professional and temp services, I'd say most of that, those charges are for on-call consultants for surveying. As as they're tied to land development reviews. So whether it's a parcel map or subdivision map, anything that's a legal exhibit and description that the surveyor has to stamp, we send to them for their review. Or in times that we need something stamped for ourselves, like we're going to require a street dedication or some type of easement, we have to go through them since they're the licensed professional. Publications and dues, again, just the different agencies, we pay dues to ICC, which is International Code Council. That's all the building code-related items. The building inspectors are required to keep up with training every three years just to stay up on the codes. So being a member of that provides us discounts for them, for us to help them do that. Let's see. So in the Green Book renewal, so that's some of the specifications we use to follow in the street right-of-way. All of the legal publications, we have to notice and we pay towards the Porterville Recorder, those are handled under this publication and dues. And those are the main items for that we have in engineering and project management.
Thank you for that, Director. I I have one question, just on the the physical from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four on on employees or salaries and benefits. We see a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase. What was your department at in twenty-one, twenty-two as far as employees?
Yeah, we're down at like eighteen personnel. So with the crew plus vacancies we have, we're up at twenty-five. And so we added a building permit technician. We added a couple more construction inspectors, one more building inspector. What was it? We reactivated the assistant city engineer in hopes of getting some in-house help.
Gotcha, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I have one question. And all this is funded through the general fund?
No, the, well, the Building Division is a hundred percent general fund. For engineering, the bulk of staff is sixty to seventy percent towards projects. So only thirty to forty percent are towards the general fund. And and those are, we're able to do that because of grant programs, state funding that we get allocated and that we can build towards.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Director. We can move on. If there's no other questions.
Okay. Moving on to Public Works, there's a small portion of Public Works that's funded through the general fund. Approximately seven full-time staff. The first section is street maintenance. You'll see a modest increase over the last three or four years in street maintenance personnel. Probably one of the larger changes, and the fire and police chief has spoken to kind of the cost of increase on equipment has has increased. So has our depreciation. Where in twenty-one, twenty-two is two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand and change. And this year is being proposed at three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand for vehicle maintenance or equipment maintenance and and depreciation. All other line items are pretty consistent. The next section under Public Works is street signals, signs and striping. Small amount of salaries and benefits are included in this budget. Other standard operating expenses haven't increased much except for the maintenance and repair of materials for the the equipment. That's increased about twenty thousand over the, since two thousand twenty-one. Total budget of four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty is proposed for street signals, signs and striping. I apologize, I didn't give you the total amount for street maintenance. Under the general fund is projected to be seven-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven. The next section under Public Works for the general fund is street lighting. A small portion of salaries is directed towards street lighting because they're it's split between various departments and staff. But the biggest expense in street lighting is actually the utilities or electricity for streetlights. That line item has increased over the years with increase in streetlights, but also the increase in electricity. It's now projected to be seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. Total budget for street lighting is seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five. Moving on to page thirty-six, did want to highlight that storm drain maintenance, which had been under the general fund in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, has now been moved to the enterprise fund. Under the sewer division. And then finally, under Public Works is a small amount that goes towards parking lot maintenance. There's some outside services that assist us from time to time. That budget has seen a modest increase from twenty-one, twenty-two of thirty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty to this year's proposed budget of fifty-one thousand for professional temp services. All in all, for parking lot maintenance, we're budgeted, have budgeted ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty. Any questions for the Public Works, small section under the general fund? Most of it is in the enterprise fund. All right.
I think we're ready to move on to Parks and Leisures, since he's already starting off right, turning on the air conditioner.
Donnie's turned on the air conditioner and he's going to cover about sixty pages. So we're going to speed this up.
Perfect.
Yeah, the wonderful role of Parks and Leisure is sixty pages. So Fernando, you're going to have to get on your A-game here to to keep up with me. He's ready? All right. So see, our, the biggest impacts, which you've heard tonight, it also covers ours as well as far as the vehicle maintenance and building and grounds maintenance, utilities and staffing. Those are our two, our four big ones. On page forty, that's our, what we call our Parks Maintenance and Operations. We have twenty full-time and sixteen part-time Parks Division staff. This division covers parks, city facilities, buildings, ballfields, sports complex, medians, abatement, that's weed abatement and encampments, trails and trees.
How many vacancies do you have? I apologize.
We have one clerical assistant, one, which we're getting ready to fill. And that would be the clerical for our Park Superintendent. There are zero vacancies as far as like our Parks guys that are out in the field and ladies. For vehicle, I'm just going to touch on a few of these and be happy to answer any questions. But vehicle maintenance and replacement, like I said, we have over fifty vehicles and equipment in our Parks fleet that we have to maintain. As far as building and grounds maintenance, those cover such things as herbicides. You know, as far as, as there are more areas that we're having to be asked to maintain. There's obviously more herbicides and and more work that needs to be done. The other main contributor to building and grounds maintenance is graffiti removal and vandalism. This year alone, we've hit about thirty thousand dollars. Those are things that are hard to predict, how much is going to impact our budget every year. That thirty thousand we weren't prepared for this year. And so we just take a hit on that. But that's something that has to be taken care of, obviously. Also trips to the dump, those are increasing costs every year, which is for our abatement crew. So a lot of trips to the dump. Those can range anywhere from thirty dollars all the way up to four hundred dollars a day we're paying for dump fees. Class of utilities, like that's been already said tonight, but those continue to rise. Electricity, but for us mainly it's the water. And the biggest hit for us is the sports complex.
I saw that, but that's in later in in the presentation. It's a, it's increased a hundred thousand dollars.
It's a big one, yes.
And that's just the sports complex? It's not counting all the other parts?
It's a quarter million, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of people in the public, they don't really think about or realize that, you know, the city also pays for its own water. People just think that we don't pay for water, but it hits our budget as well. Yeah.
Significantly. Before you move on to the next page, I just looking at the salaries and benefits numbers. You you had a significant increase in hirings from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five.
You'll see mainly on our part-time, so that's all the abatement crew. So over the course of the last couple of years, we've added, you know, twelve part-timers and then three full-time, two initially for weed abatement and one for encampment. So that's where you're going to see that. It's not, those are like a hundred percent for that abatement crew, essentially.
Gotcha. And this is all generally, general fund funded?
That is correct. Other equipment maintenance, the last line on there, I would just, that's such things as spray wigs, chippers, flail motors, weed eaters, chainsaws, things like that. One thing if you notice, as you go through a few of the pages, which I'm not going to touch on everything. But one thing you might notice is you'll see in like the year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, some of these will have personnel costs. And in, starting in twenty-four, twenty-five, what we did was we merged all those into our page forty, which is our Parks Maintenance and Operations. So that's why you're also going to see that big jump, like the mayor just mentioned, from twenty-three, twenty-four. If you look on page forty right there, you see the four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand and it goes up to seven-seventy-one. Where if you look at a lot of the other pages, you have zero regular staff there. So our Parks personnel, they jump around from facility to facility. And so instead of just charging like Veterans Park for one individual, he or she may cover Veterans Park in one day, then might get called over to a median, then might get called over to Murray Park if there's something wrong. So instead of breaking down the personnel, what we did, and it hopefully made a little bit easier on on our finance department as well. and it hopefully made a little bit easier on our finance department as well, is just merged, merged those together. So for our time sheets and things like that, so that's why you see that big jump too. It's not like we added twenty more people, it's just that we merged those together. So in the following pages, you'll see zero, like if you go to Murray Park on page forty-three, you're gonna see zero, zero cost for staff there. So it just got all merged.
Makes sense. Thank you for the clarification.
So those are just, many of those next pages are just all of our different, you know, parks and facilities and things. If you go to page sixty-five, that's our leisure services, that's our next division. So we have six full-time staff and over sixty part-timers in our leisure services.
Wait, before, I appreciate you trying to speed this up. This is good, because I want to go home too. But can we go to page fifty-four and talk about the utilities? And the impact and the structural issues that we have with this? Because this is just one park. If we add Murray Park, Solid Park, Veterans Park, Fallen Heroes Park, it gets painful.
It does. And this is the first year for the sports complex on the tertiary treatment. So we haven't even experienced a full twelve months yet. So I think it's gonna take probably a good two years or so to really get that good number in there. But we're paying the same amount, the same rate goes for tertiary as it is for potable water. So out there, we have that new tertiary plant, so we're watering the sports complex primarily with the tertiary. When the tertiary treatment plant went online, there's a few things that were being tried out and we had to flush the tank a few times. And so we had to get that water out of the tank as well, so.
So we charged ourselves for having a structural issue on the public work side? We charged Parks and Leisures for that?
Just water, extra water. We get charged for the water.
Yes, but they had to put the water somewhere. And so we, we charge the city for that?
The city charges the city, correct.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get the clarification there, because where else would they have put that water?
I can't think of any other.
I just, I, I just trying to apply common sense and the impacts on our budget and then, because we all know the color of money. Well, we're trying to better understand it. And so, once that money goes into the enterprise with the proposition two eighteen process, it's no longer something that we can touch. And so it seems like we're abusing ourselves in this situation if we're applying common sense to it. Continue, Director. Do you have a question there, Vice Mayor?
I was just gonna say for the scope, that's gonna be ongoing, a hundred thousand bucks a year that.
Well, it's gonna increase.
We're paying for it, it's gonna continue to increase. It's about eighty acres?
It is about eighty-five acres.
Yeah, and so people that are using it, there's an expense to that. And it's weird how it's internally funded, to your point. And I'm glad you brought that point out. Thank you.
Yes, please.
This goes back to early discussion with council, lowering rates for people utilizing this. I think we changed it to charge half a rate, or cut the rates in half for organizations. But you see, there's an actual amount that to do at some point. The city's taxpayers are helping subsidize that expense. A lot of things have been kept artificially low to benefit the community, but the tax bills do. So we're gonna have to look at at some point increasing fees versus cutting fees.
I don't like the way you think, Councilman, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, just for clarification, I mean, we were talking, it's apples and oranges. We're talking about sewer rates, not water rates. And I don't know that we can go and ask the people to pay more until we have our stuff in order here. So I appreciate the clarification though, and the interest to make sure we keep it rate. But the comment is, we kept it artificially low to protect the people and now we're in a financial situation, so.
No, I understand. I was just getting, so the public understands if our rate increases, like we did, had to do with trash and with water and with sewer, it's not because we're, you know, wanting to put a burden on them, but the city has to pay these expenses at some point.
Yes, and the city has been paying its fair share on these utilities. That's, that's a factor and that's the increase we see here in the budget.
Well, I mean, I just would make that same comment. I think Councilman Beltran's right, but we want to have some clarification on that because we have a large amount of park spaces. It's four and a half percent of the city or whatever, and that takes a lot of utility money just to keep it green and just to keep the lawn mowed. A lot more than people probably understand, because they're paying at the household rate and we're paying at the, at the enterprise rate, the same amount. And it's a very large line item.
Yeah, it's not water in your front lawn. This is eighty acres, just that one filled. Continue on, Director. Thank you.
Right. So for leisure services, that hand, as like I talked about, we have six full-time and about sixty part-time. Right now, up at the pool, we have about thirty or so seasonal part-time. So that makes half of the sixty part-time employees. This division handles youth sports, adult sports, special events, enrichment programs, seniors, military banner, wall of fame, a little event this weekend called Freedom Fest. They'll be fully engaged in that. Highlighting two items here, so if you look at the, this is on page sixty-five. The uniform allowance is one thing I'd just like to highlight. So that's something where if we get more participation in our youth sports, then we have to buy more uniforms. We see the recovery on the revenue side, which doesn't show here, but things like our Veterans Day run as well. So every year, we're adding about two to three hundred more participants in the Veterans Day run, which is awesome. But we also have to buy more shirts and more things like that for them. So on the expenditure side, you'll see those go up, but on the revenue side, we do get that back. The equipment in this division is a lot different than equipment in some of the other divisions. So in this one, when we talk equipment, we talk like balls for participants, soccer goals, chalkers to line fields, all those kind of things are equipment. And there was a question earlier about professional and temporary services. So for the leisure services side, that can cover everything from like our DOJ fingerprinting, when we do background checks. It can cover, we, for our Veterans Day run, we have a timing company come in and time all their over a thousand participants. So that's a professional service that we do. We used to do that in-house and it just got to be, we had about a hundred and fifty participants. Now we're over thirteen hundred, so there's just no way we could, we could handle that. But also like the lunch cater for our senior citizens, Christmas luncheon every year. So just all sorts of different things going to professional services for this. Thursday night dance, we have a band that plays for our Thursday night dance for our seniors. Also portable toilets comes out of this one. So all sorts of different things. Touching on the pool, page sixty-eight, two main expenses up there. I just talked about the lifeguards, so you'll see that's the big expense for part-timers. That's all the lifeguards up at the pool for the summer. And then building and grounds maintenance for this one. Those are all the chlorine and chemicals to keep the water chemistry. That's a big one up at the pool, obviously. So that's page sixty-eight.
And we just had a nice remodel. Looks really good.
Super nice. Been a lot of compliments up there this summer on that as well, yes. Touching on the library, on the general fund on the library, that's page seventy. We have ten full-time staff. We have two vacancies, which we've had vacant since we moved over to the current location. And then there's twelve part-time employees. So out of the eight currently that we have full-time, three of them are Measure H. And then we also have some Measure H in part-time salaries. And we also have one partial thirty percent Measure H full-time employee. One of our full-time employees also is paid out of a California literacy grant, twenty percent. So that covers the staffing on the library.
So the vast majority of our library staffing is funded by Measure H and another grant?
So three out of the eight currently are Measure H. The other five partial, one of them is another grant funding source partially. So we have like four full-time general fund employees right now.
Okay, so it's half, okay. Roughly.
Yeah.
I don't know why the number isn't jumping out at me right now, but it was around, is it a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year? To rent out the, the building that we're in?
That's for the lease, yeah.
For the lease?
Yes.
It's not jumping out to me, I.
You're correct.
Yeah, it was under the temporary library budget.
Page ten.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, that was page ten. So that one was talked about coming over to the general fund this year. So that would be, the one hundred and sixty would come over as well as the three hundred and fifteen-ish for the armory would possibly come over. The forty-five thousand for the Zalad House, which I was gonna talk about next, would come over. And then the golf course potentially would come over as well, which on the expenditure side is gonna be about six hundred and eighteen thousand. So that'd be a total of about one point two million dollars more on the expenditure side for Parks and Leisure. So that would get us to about seven million.
I had a brief question. With the ten full-time employees and twelve part-time, would that be roughly the number when, for the complete library staff as if it was the old library? Or is that like a reduction? That's full staff.
So that would be, if that was the full staff amount for the sixteen thousand square foot.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to clarify regarding the temporary library. Some of the funding could come over to help supplement that. It's coming out of the insurance proceeds at the moment. But as far as the armory, this is, those expenses are not identified in this current proposed budget. That's something that we'll add in as we work to a final budget. The Zalad House historically has been funded through.
Donation.
Donation, but those funds have expired and so we need to pick up that operating expense or, or look at another strategy for, for the Zalad House. And then, yeah, the golf course, we've touched upon it early that there is an unfunded liability that we need to address. The three million dollars for the golf course and deferred losses that we need to have a plan for to start paying back.
Well, you know, I think this is helping us as we get into this, it's helping us understand some new liabilities too, right? So we got the unfunded liability of the golf course, and I would say, everybody wants a golf course. We subsidize it. In business, you'd call it a loss leader, you pay for that loss because it's providing services for the city. We haven't paid for it, that's an issue, but we're gonna continue to pay for it, it looks like, and we have to catch up. I look at the armory as something that we've added that helps us with the smart team, helps us with law, restoring the rule of law. It helps us with our smart teams and all those folks that are helping us to get our city under control with law and order. That's gonna be an expense for the foreseeable future. And we have to, you know, figure that out, because the public needs to understand that this is part of the expense of, of the world that we live in today. And it's not really in the traditional budget here. And I think we have to really think about that in terms of this is something that we need, not like a golf course, but it costs about as much as the golf course, maybe a little bit more, that we're gonna be required to, to keep the maintenance and law and order and keep our streets clean and, you know, take care of the problem that we're facing today. And I think that's part of the structural conversation that we really need to have so we're strategic and we're assessing where we can find efficiencies. But this is additional expense and we're gonna have to continue to pay it.
And Vice Mayor, just to add to the armory and bring transparency, that has been funded by ARPA funds, mostly from the million dollars that we received from the county.
Yes.
And that's been over the last three years. So those funds are coming to their end or drying up. But it hasn't hit our general fund yet, but it will this next cycle. Is that correct in saying that?
That's correct. So we've expended, I want to say it's about five hundred thousand this fiscal year for that. And we're, we're gonna have about five hundred thousand remaining. So the armory expenditures are on page, they actually are in here. But it's not labeled armory because we were using the account that we set up when the emergency storms happen. And we're continuing to use that account because we still haven't closed out all our FEMA projects.
Okay, I appreciate that for the clarification. And just, I wanted to highlight that because we've had members of the community come in and say, where's the million dollars? What are we doing with it? And we are utilizing it for the people experiencing homelessness.
Right, and the county ARPA monies, we did not receive those upfront. It's on a reimbursement basis. So what we're doing is submitting claims to the county on a quarterly basis so that we can receive those, those funds.
Thank you, Janie.
Then maybe for, just to continue the conversation, Janie, is there's some prior year expenses that can be reimbursed?
There are. So the county did give us the option to retroactively request, you know, request reimbursements for retroactive expenditures if we choose to do that.
How far back?
So FEMA covered about six months. They reimbursed us for about six months, would have been from May, well, gosh, I can't remember, twenty-three. Yeah, and then the county said we can request reimbursement for that, for that time period after FEMA.
So to your question about the million dollars, although Janie just reported that, you know, this year was five hundred thousand and we have roughly five hundred thousand left, we haven't gone back to the prior years, back to twenty-twenty-three to claim those reimbursements for the use of the armory, which that's one area that we're strategizing to make ourselves whole for all those expenses for the last two and a half years.
Okay.
So this is a bright spot. We've been paying it forward and that's part of the deficit, right? So part of that one point six million dollar deficit, we might be able to recover some monies here. This is a bright spot. And it's also a bookmark to help people understand that this is an expense that we're gonna have for the foreseeable future. So we need to understand how it's being paid, how it's funded, how we're using it, how we're budgeting for it. And, you know, this is a great opportunity for the public now to hear it directly from this budget meeting, what we're doing and how we're doing it. Thank you very much, Janie, for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and this may come at the end and also ongoing conversations, but in the event that we, we do have a surplus in the general fund this fiscal year, you know, it's a decision for the council, do we want to take that surplus, whatever it is, and move it to this fiscal year to help offset the deficit?
So options. Alright, so this is a good structural.
We won't see that until around September.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I gotta tell you, this, this dive, and I know we got a little further to go, but this has been the most transparent and clarifying event I've had in these chambers as far as understanding how the city works. I appreciate all the hard work that's done. I know we got more to do, but this, this really has been great. Thank you all. Continue, City Manager.
Okay. Do you feel, do you have any questions on the library? That was the last section before we jump into our special revenues such as Measure I and Measure H.
Now, at just, and I'll just say, this for repetition, I had said earlier that the expense for the library is being paid by the insurance, but that's gonna run out at some point. And if we continue to use some of that monies, it's gonna go against our building of the library. And so we gotta be smart about that as we go into this budget season and start looking at how we can mitigate, because we haven't built the library yet. And so we gotta think of some ways to be creative around that and maybe, maybe we can come up with some solutions.
I love that, that input there, Vice Mayor, and really highlighting the two, almost two hundred thousand dollars a year we're paying on the lease and what does that, how long is it gonna take to build a future library? And so really looking at that for the future, I really love you posing that. Any other questions? We can move on?
Alright, we're gonna move on to Measure H. And I know the police chief, fire chief and even our Parks and Leisure director have touched upon Measure H. Just so, for transparency, with Measure H, forty-two and a half percent of the revenue is dedicated to the police department. The same forty-two and a half percent is for the fire department. And then the remaining fifteen percent, up to fifteen percent would be for library and literacy. So revenues are projected for Measure H. Again, we'll get updated figures as we get reports from our sales tax consultant. But based on the information that we have right now, we're proposing a revenue for Measure H of five point four million. If you were to add up the expenditure pages, expenses are a little bit ahead of revenue. Whereas in total, expenses equal five point six million, so about two hundred thousand dollars more than, than revenue. We'll continue to work on this, these particular fund sources and sharpen our pencil. We traditionally have no deficit for these two measures, so the team will continue to work. But if you have any questions for the police department chief or the, the fire department chief and Donnie Moore? Did, how would you like, I know Chief Casilla, you covered a lot in your opening statement. Do you want to add some context for Measure H? statement. Do you want to add some context for Measure H?
Yeah, I can. It's uh there was no major increases to our Measure H uh budget this year. Um I can just add um the the sworn positions that we have in Measure H, if you'd like to hear those. We got ten uh sworn positions and then we have five professional staff um that are funded uh salary benefits and overtime out of that. That's again our biggest expenditure out of this budget and um so a total of fifteen employees out of the public safety fund. And happy to answer any other questions that you may have on my budget.
I'm not seeing any questions. I know uh I think the fire chief is going to have the biggest changes, so I think we're all anticipating that.
All right. Chief Cogburn, any any comments on your budget in regards to Measure H?
Yeah, Measure H, minimal minimal changes. Um twelve personnel are funded from Measure H. The biggest changes are going to be Measure I. Um three vehicles are of the vehicle replacement fund. Out of the uh the total operating budget of Measure H, ninety percent of that is salary and benefits with ten percent of it being maintenance and operations.
Then Chief, on page seventy-five, can you, I know it's titled Public Safety Station. Can you um tell us what that really means?
Yeah, and Janie could probably um add some more depth to it, but that is uh for Station Seventy-three, which was has been historically uh cohabitated by both PD and Fire. Uh as we, our needs grew as an organization, the police chief graciously uh gave us uh some uh space that we could use over there. So we we occupy the majority of that building now. Uh what PD has there is their evidence techs, evidence storage, but this is to uh cover the utilities uh and some of the grounds uh maintenance, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
You covered it.
We've often talked about, you know, utilities increases and and you can see on this particular line item, that's increased quite a bit over the last four years.
Briefly, out of the twelve personnel, are those all firefighters or is there other staff?
Give me one second. You know, add clarification too for the question earlier for the mayor. I forgot to mention that we have two code enforcement vacancies as well. So in addition to the other ones, we have two code enforcement vacancies. Um so for Measure H, those are all firefighter positions.
Donnie, on the library side, do you want to add any context?
Uh like I mentioned, there are three uh full-time out of that Measure H and um when the measure came about, those were supposed to help re restore some of the hours at the library. So we were able to reopen on the weekends. So we're open Saturday, Sunday, a little bit later on Friday. So that staffing helps cover um those costs. It also uh helps with some of our additional programs and some special events and things tied to literacy. Uh but we continue to come in significantly under our budget, mainly because of our smaller footprint over there. Um those budget savings could potentially help with um funding a a new library if, you know, if that was the direction. So.
We got to think out of the box, so let's keep that conversation alive.
Any other questions on Measure H before we turn to Measure I?
I'm not seeing. Let's go forward.
All right. Um Measure I proposed revenues or expected revenues is about ten point eight million. Uh expected expenditures is eleven point three million, so slight deficit in this fund. Again, that's something that we'll we'll take a look at. Um uh Chief, you want to talk about anything regarding the police operation? Walking through your your side of that?
Yeah, I think Measure I is probably going to be the most significant changes to the three budgets that I have. Um in in Measure I for personnel, we have a total of nineteen sworn in this budget and then a three professional staff. So total of twenty-three that are, all these positions are filled. Um as we go through, so all of my uh vehicle and vehicle depreciation is now out of Measure I or proposed to be the rest of them out of Measure I. I would say ninety percent were already out of um the I fund. Um so that's a total of seventy-six vehicles and then to go back just a little bit, um ten are out of Measure H for Measure H officers that are assigned to that budget. All these vehicles um out of I um do not include, we do not, we, at this point, we don't depreciate the Linco Bearcat, which is our tactical vehicle, um which is something that we probably should look at in the in the near future over the next few um budget cycles, because as um it it's probably a twenty-year vehicle, um but the price of the vehicle is only going to increase. So that's something that we would probably look at uh fiscally to depreciate that vehicle. Um we do have other support vehicles too that we don't depreciate. Um we have evidence trailers that we utilize to transport evidence for destruction, um and also uh guns and narcotics for destruction, um secured trailers that we use. Um we do not depreciate our speed trailers, which is what I spoke about earlier. Now, we do fund those usually through a grant process. We've been fortunate enough to receive grant funding for those. So the majority, if you look at that line item, um for I, although it decreased in general fund by four hundred thousand, you can see a significant increase in uh depreciation. Um well, it's under vehicle maintenance, but that includes our depreciation payments for all vehicles except for Measure H and then our fuel costs and then our vehicle maintenance. And then obviously, if we have an unfortunate incident where a vehicle is crashed, then that uh then that would have to be replaced out of that fund or repaired if we have a major repair on a vehicle. So in looking at that fund, um command staff and I, as we develop this budget, um we move that monies from general fund to um help in the the vehicle depreciation uh area. But you could also see that there was a ask for a a hundred thousand dollar increase overall to that budget for um vehicle maintenance and depreciation, just because of the overall costs, like the fire chief was talking about with the uh cost of fire engines and that he's seen over the several years. As I spoke earlier, you saw over the last five to six years, we've seen a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar increase in the purchase of vehicles. And then um with that, as we go into this budget, we're looking at replacing several vehicles in this upcoming fiscal bid budget, so that's going to impact this account. Um we also, when you go down, the other big increase, as you can see, is the four twenty account, which is again utilities, but that includes our animal control, our new animal control facility. Um unlike the other facility that was located in the Lindsay area, that was an open air faci facility. This is a closed air facility where HVAC systems are running um all the time. So there was a a large increase in utilities overall um out of Measure Measure H and at correction, out of Measure I. Um those were the major ones. Obviously, training went up for our mandatory training, getting more officers into training that uh out of the I budget that are assigned under the I budget. And then also um a small increase, but I I considered it a small in uh large larger increase when we're looking at it, but um weapons, uh sites, handguns and ammunition has also went up. So we had to increase that, um looking at it, um about three thousand dollars. I mean, that is a small increase, but we had to look at increasing that into the future. And professional temp services in all three of my budgets, when um Councilmember Rivas asked another department about that earlier, that was a large increase to our department because um uh evidence testing and uh blood draws and uh different uh outsourced things that we do such as software and transcription, lab tests, um those have all increased too over the last few years. So in all three of our budgets, uh professional temp services obviously had to go uh go up. And those were the large increases. Um uh one of the other things that we looked at this fiscal year, but I talked to the city manager that will probably hold off for another um budget cycle, was the addition of additional clerical clerk. Um we actually need more uh part-time funding for background investigations and special investigations that we do. So we actually moved uh monies from general fund to reduce that into I to um help with uh backgrounds and special investigations for part-time employees. Um and so an additional fifty thousand dollar request was made there for that area. So be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
I have a que, I have a question, uh Chief. Uh the background checks, do they still go to the FBI?
Yeah, so fingerprints are done through uh both systems for FBI and Cal DOJ and then pre-employment backgrounds are done by our department.
Yeah.
And then um we also have those that are assigned to professional standards and training.
Yeah.
Do backgrounds assist with pre-employment training also if they're hired? And then also uh any special, when I say special investigations, that usually means that uh an internal affairs investigation or um a complaint by a member of the community is assigned to one of those individuals. We have two two full-time in that unit and right now one part-time that assists in evidence also. And we're looking for an additional to just keep our heads above water.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Moving on.
All right. Uh Chief Cogburn would like to add any context for the fire department under Measure I?
Yes, thank you. So Measure I, um twelve personnel are funded from Measure I and the majority of my my vehicle replacement account. And the largest portion of, this is where the the bulk of my maintenance and operations comes from. Um one thing that you'll notice is, and Janie and I were just talking about this, if you look at uh proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh down at the bottom under automotive equipment, that is actually one-time costs for this fiscal year. That is for uh apparatus and equipment that we purchased through uh uh through our CIP. So we will actually be less that nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six proposed.
So we're going to get a nice kiss in Measure I, because we won't be pulling out. We'll keep some in there.
Yeah, that's that's, that was one-time money, so that won't be reoccurring this year.
All right. Paying it forward.
Paying it forward, yeah.
I like that. Hey, can you guys clarify real quick? Is this the same as H where it's forty-two and a half, forty-two and a half? What's the percentage on Measure I? How does that break out?
This particular is is a general sales tax measure. Um now, what went to the voters was a focus on public safety and roads. Um and so that's where the priority has been, but uh it it, there's no percentages assigned
Okay.
To particular need, a particular need and that that cha, the priorities of the council can dictate where where the funding goes.
Interesting. So there's more flexibility with Measure I than Measure H?
There is a small piece in Measure I uh that's fun, helps uh support our street maintenance department. And so under the direction of the council, there's been a more investment into street maintenance. So you'll see some salaries and benefits uh for our street maintenance department um being funded under Measure I. Did want to call that out. And then at the bottom of page eighty-one, um is our litter abatement. It's specifically along the highway that has been funded. Uh I don't think it's necessarily Measure I, right? It's been some additional other funds.
That's a partnership with TCAG and and Caltrans, right?
Yeah. So that partner, the funding for that partnership has has ended and so you'll notice that for this particular fiscal year, um there's no fu, no funds for that. The litter.
Didn't we vote the last council meeting to continue that? I thought that's what we did. It was to end it?
No, they're working on a new agreement.
Agreement.
Okay.
It was an agreement.
I can answer that.
It's actually diff, yeah, go ahead, Claudia.
Um so there is an agreement um with TCAG for the supplemental because um Caltrans couldn't cover por, a portion of it. So then TCAG covered the rest of it and so that agreement just needed to be solidified so we could get reimbursed.
So we got a, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
But that has been the request that we continue it from the operators. So just be working with TCAG and seeing if they have funds in of desire and if council desired and availability of funds.
It's something I I still support today. I think it's a great program in beautifying our highways and around the county areas and the city areas, so.
Mayor, we've uh gone through a lot in the in the first two hours. We've got a little bit more to go. Uh just wanted to ask if you wanted to take a a quick recess?
Do you guys want a break? Staff, you want to recess?
I'm not going to say.
Raymond, would you like, well, let's, how how much, how how much longer do you think we got?
So the the couple topics that are still on the list to go over is is the ARPA funds. Um and we're happy to pull up um the summary sheet and kind of walk council through uh what, where the ARPA funds have been spent at and as well as what is, what projects are budgeted for this fiscal year, if you'd like. Um and then we jump into the enterprise funds.
That sounds good. Want to take a break?
Yeah, let's let's take a ten-minute break.
Okay.
Okay. We'll be back in ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. We're now on page 82, want to turn your attention to the American Rescue Plan Act, commonly referred as ARPA. We did add a summary sheet of the full accounting of where ARPA funds have been spent over the years. It's important to bring and highlight this accounting because on page 80, the following pages will need to update, update those pages in our proposed budget to reflect what is being displayed on the screen for you all now. I'm happy to, to walk through the categories of expenditures or answer any questions for you right now, but essentially what's left with the ARPA funds that we need to spend by the end of next fiscal year, is that correct? Next fiscal year, is focusing on the Fourth Street Community Center construction, the close project of the Navigation Center expansion construction, and some other minor projects. Roughly about 6, 6.8 million for this next fiscal year in projects.
That we have to spend?
Yes, sir.
So clarifying, there's four projects that we need to spend this amount of money for?
No, it's the Fourth Street Community Center construction project, the one on Fourth and Henderson.
Okay, oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, the, the community center.
I misunderstood, sorry. Thank you.
And we used 4.26 million dollars for that building. One thing I would like to add is if we could get an update at the council meetings where that project is and timeframe, I know I, we keep adding more on you guys, but maybe, maybe once a month we get some kind of update on that, just where it's at and, and how it's going.
Yeah, I want to recognize Sarah Weaver who's in the audience today. She's a project manager and will be happy to provide you frequent updates on that project.
Awesome. So some of the things, just, we're going to talk about it because it's here and it's in front of the public, the vaccination incentive plan. We spent 1.8 million dollars on this, and that was the incentive to get vaccinated. There was $100 a shot, and it was with local businesses throughout our community, and that was where close to 2 million of this went. And then one that really stood out to me, because doing the math, I knew we spent monies in certain places, I thought we had the million dollars for the baseball field at the sports complex, but it looks like we redirected those funds towards the community center, from my understanding, but the premium pay, hazard pay, and the supporting and retaining employees, it looks like we spent close to 2 point, well, 2.7 on that. What, what was that program about?
Ask Janie to go in a little bit more detail.
So the premium pay and hazard pay for essential workers, that was for the employees that worked, were here physically during COVID when we stayed open, and the supporting and retaining employees, that was one-time thing that we did during negotiations to provide incentives for continuous service to employees.
And, and so what kind of payment, what does that look like? Obviously, it added up to the 2.7 between the both.
Yes, so the continuous service incentives is five, it was $5,000 for every five years of service. Right, Yuli?
Yes, it was, and that was for all employees within the city, and what happened was we caught everybody up, so if you had worked here for 25 years, you got $5,000 per every five years, and that was through MOU negotiations.
Wow, so you got a $25,000 check if you were here at 25 years?
Correct.
Gotcha, and that went all the way up to the city manager?
It was everybody, yeah, everybody represented through a negotiation group.
Gotcha, so even our city manager at that time got around a $15,000 check?
He is, I don't know, Janie, do you remember that? That was, I don't think so, because that's through a contract, he's not, the city manager's not represented through a negotiation group.
Okay, so that's.
So would it have to have been built into the contract, and I don't think the contract was up at that time.
Gotcha.
And all directors and lower.
And, and lower, gotcha. Well, that's, that's good to know.
Well, that's, it's interesting, because if someone was here a long time, 20 years, they got 20,000 bucks. But it's in negotiations, was it discussed that maybe we, we could have, instead of giving one-time payments, we could have increased everyone's pay? Was that part of the discussion?
It was, I think the reason why they decided to go with the years of service was to kind of give them something for the longevity, for being loyal to the city, the longevity. It used to be that it was $50 every five years, and so this was a significant increase which everybody was excited about, and it helped us get to a two-year contract at the time. At that time, everybody was trying to negotiate one year, and that incentive kind of boosted it to try to get that two-year contract.
Well, I guess it's complicated, but just, I'm glad we're having a moment to discuss it, because that's a lot of money, 2.7 million dollars. And you know, it looks like we, it's, it's once-in-a-lifetime event, hopefully, and hopefully it never happens again, right? So want to learn some lessons, and I'd, I'd like to take this to the COVID committee and dissect it a little bit more. But, you know, we took advantage of this in some good ways, and maybe in some not-so-good ways, looking back, right? And so now, if we're in a position where we're in a deficit, and we weren't paying our bills, and yet we were paying out a lot of money for things, this is a contrast, right? So I'll just maybe think about it this way. It looks like if you, here's a comparison, so if we are 3 million in the golf course in arrears, we're 10 million in unfunded healthcare in arrears, we spent a half a million on the armory in the Zalid House, it's about 13 and a half million dollars, we spent about 3 million in bonuses, 2 million in gift cards, 5 million on an animal shelter, 3 million on the homeless shelter remodeling, it's about the same amount of money. So we could have caught everything up. Is the contrast. This is a big number, and it's a big equal idea, although it doesn't play out that way, but that's how much money this is, that could have been spent differently, we wouldn't be having as critical discussion about our finances right now. That's, that's the point I wanted to make about that, and you know, a lot of people are concerned about building a library, and we spent $5 million on an animal shelter, that could have went towards a library. So there's some, there's, looking back. So there's some, there's, looking back, we made some poor decisions in my estimation. And I think that a city would be in a much better financial position if we took this once in a lifetime event, which is the ARPA funds, and spin it more practically towards the muscle of the city instead of special projects and, and bonuses and things of that nature. So that's my opinion. I just want to get on the record and talk about that. I'm glad this is out in the public now. We can debate it, we can talk about it because we have to learn some lessons from this. The big lesson for me is we could have used this money to keep the city healthy financially and we didn't.
And I'd just like to add, you know, with, with these funds, it was the council's direction. So it's not an attack at any staff in the room. It's, it's the leadership during those times that pushed things like the vaccine incentives. And so when we Monday quarterback here, because that's kind of what we're doing, it's directed in that fashion. So just to lay out some of the, where those funds went, the vaccine incentive, two million dollars. The employee retention pay was two point seven. We, we spent about five million at the animal shelter. And then Fourth Street Community Center, four point two million. And then the Navigation Center, two point eight million. And so those were the big expenditures during this time that, that spent the ARPA funds on.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make, add to your comment because we have spent a lot of money on the Navigation Center and the Armory and our police force and, you know, services around the community and abatement crews to the tune of millions per year. And you know, we continue to spend that money in ways that maybe in past years we wouldn't have had to. But since 2020, it seemed to have come to a head. So over the last five years, that drain, that drain on our, on our economic health of the city, we have to understand it, we have to talk about it because we spent three million dollars helping the Navigation Center expansion. That's to ameliorate a real problem. And that's, that's real money that we could have spent elsewhere. And I think that if you add in all the other ancillary costs, it really is part of the drain on the, on the community. It might have been, and I'll Monday morning quarterback there, might have been why we put off some of our other expenses, paying some of our expenses. And I think that there's, we have to have that conversation to understand those trade-offs so we make better decisions moving forward so that we can get back into financial health of our city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Does anyone else have any comments on the ARPA funds?
I'll just make the brief comment. We came on in twenty twenty-two, myself and the mayor. And I think part of the context is when the ARPA funds were first given out, there was a lot of red tape on where it could be spent. And as the years went by, those got more and more lax. That's why you see certain ways. I, and I don't want to speak for the council at the time because I wasn't on there, but I think they were really restricted on where they could spend it. And then it got a little bit loosened up. So that's probably, had we known at the beginning that we could spend it wherever we want, some of these things probably would have been addressed. But at the time, there was constraints on where it could go. So that's just a little bit of context.
I know for a fact, we were the only city in Tulare County, possibly San Joaquin Valley, that pushed vaccine incentives and spent nearly two million dollars on that. So it's, it's easy to Monday quarterback, as I said, but I think decisions could have been better and, and ultimately helping the issues that we're dealing with today. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a, I have a question. Clarify something for me. You said, you, it was written in the MOU to receive these five thousand for every five years?
Yeah, that was through negotiations.
So you, so help me understand something. So when this money was coming in, did they already know that it was going to be utilized and so they immediately put it in the MOU to get it? Or how did they do this?
No, no, no. What Councilmember Beltran was saying is true. When the.
I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah, when the ARPA monies were received, there was a lot of restricted guidelines to it.
Right.
Uh, when the years of service was approved, that was.
By who approved that?
The council.
Okay.
That was around twenty twenty-three.
I just, I just want the public to understand.
Yeah, so it's kind of like negotiations right now where I go to the council, the council goes to me and we go back and forth. That's exactly what happened when this was approved. And then it was ratified by the council at the end.
I see. If I remember right, some of those funds were only allocated for specific programs, not for incentives to keep people here at work. I mean, that would, that would be something that was, to me, not in the wise decisions in, in, in keep retaining people. So with that, I, I think they were spent a little unwisely. And they spent a lot of money where it should have been going to other programs. Because a lot of people were working during that time and they never got incentives. And they, and it wasn't written in their MOUs either. So kudos to whoever did this because they, they got a, they got a good incentive to, to get some money where they shouldn't have got money. And that's just my opinion. So with that, I'll leave it back to you.
Okay. There's no other questions? I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Moving on, so what we wanted to highlight in the, in the next couple of pages is there'll be some refinement to the American Rescue Plan Act with these new figures that we displayed on the summary sheet. And that will come in future revisions of the budget. Turning to page eighty-six, we've spoken, we've talked and discussed the Zalid House quite a bit with Mr. Moore. The expected revenues is, is five thousand five hundred and ten dollars. The expected expenditures is forty-five thousand four hundred and forty-eight, roughly a deficit of forty thousand. That will be funded out of the general fund unless there's some direction given by the council to, to do something else.
I don't think we're going to be given direction tonight on that.
Okay. Moving on to, I'll pass it back to Claudia to round out the community development, specifically talking about CBDG, which is our housing.
Thank you. Yeah, so the last section I spoke a little bit about. It's basically, you'll see there, it's basically community development block grant, which we're an entitlement city. So as long as we follow our annual progress, annual, annual plan, every year and every five years our con plan, we, and the, you know, the federal government appropriates those funds, we should be expected to receive them. So that's why it's called CDBG fund, basically, because it's what we'll have constantly. But it also includes other funds like the, the seventy-five dollars from the every real estate transaction, that's the PLHA funding. And it also includes any home funding or Calhome funding that we apply for, for housing assistance, either for down payment assistance or rehabs of homes. And so basically, it just covers those. And depending on which fund, they allow a certain percentage to go towards administration of the grants. So CDBG's twenty percent, PLHA's five percent, Home is ten percent. So it just varies. And, but some of those where you do issue programs like, like rehab loans or, or business loans or any of that, the time that someone is working on one-on-one with that business or that homeowner, that time is captured as activity delivery time. So that also can count towards the salaries. But it has to be linked to an account or a fund that, a program that was funded. So that's where some of those salaries are, are shown right there. And that is for our housing staff. Like I mentioned earlier, there's three funded positions and a part of a manager that oversees the housing and economic development. One right now is vacant and one we fly as grant funded because that's the one that is the mostly responsible for executing the day-to-day loans, outreach, et cetera. So if the funding goes away, that position would be at risk. And then the other people would, we'd have to figure out the percentages that they normally do, where would we pay them out from? Because we wouldn't be, it'd basically be an unfunded liability now because we still have loans that are thirty years or forty years that we'd still have to continue monitoring, still make sure that they're paying, if they're paying or, you know, forgiving, if they're forgivable loans, et cetera. So that would be something that we would then have to figure out how to pay. But for right now, this next year is funded. And these are the numbers there if you have any questions.
I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to, now we're really entering in the enterprise funds. The first enterprise fund outside of the CBDG is the Transit Department. We've talked quite a bit about the transit budget. On the first page is revenues. So want to highlight that the Transit Department does not utilize general funds. It's primarily funded through federal, state and, and local funds. And it's, their budget really depends on capital projects too. There could be huge swings in the, in the transit budget depending on what capital projects are programmed for a particular fiscal year. When you're looking at actuals, I do want to highlight in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, those are the years primarily under TCR TA where they were the, the prime grantee. What you're seeing as far as expenses is we continue to maintain the fleet. We also did some small number of capital projects. So it's not, it's not a true reflection of the total budget for transit during those years because majority of it was under TCR TA. A big shift in operations also, and kind of in response to COVID, is, is when we introduced microtransit. And so you'll see some significant investments in microtransit. But we're expecting about nine million in state grants and ten million in, in federal grants. Many of the state, the state grants primarily is funded through SB one twenty-five. And based on the, the governor's budget, SB one twenty-five funds are, are still being funded. So there's no threat to that project, which is building of a new maintenance facility. And then the federal grants, although there is threat to new federal grants moving forward, these are federal grants that have already been awarded to the city that we had essentially in reserves. And then we have now programmed them to perform those projects, such as the new bus shelters, such as vehicle wraps, the signage that, and a lot of upgrades that are going to be coming to transit is funded strictly under this budget with no general fund dollars.
It, it's amazing how much, just in this one slide, this is most of our regular general fund budget by comparison. Just in one slide for transportation. And I think the public gets confused about that. You know, we were talking about maybe having ten million or more in unfunded liabilities. And we're worried about ten thousand dollars in bus wraps. But when you look at the detail here, it really puts in perspective that what we're doing with transit has given us a big advantage coming out of TCR TA. It's also given us the ability to advertise and do those things that help the city and help the culture and help us to provide services. And now we're, we're actually moving to a point where we're going to take advantage of doing some rates and some fares as the money runs out because it's not going to stay at twenty-five million. But this is secured and now we have a fleet in place. And so I really like this slide because there's a perspective here. Do you have any other comments as a former transportation and still wearing the transportation hat about this advantage in comparison from TCR TA to now and where we are, where we were, where we are?
Yeah, I want to make it clear that we're, we're still strong partners with, with the other transit providers, both TCR TA and the city of Visalia. That partnership will continue. I think managing it in-house gives us some more ownership on the direction that we're going for our local community, our service area. So I think that's our advantage. Also kind of planning, we were, we were smart by not spending all the federal funds every year that we got. We, we put some in reserves so that in the, when we needed to buy new buses, which you approved, we have nine brand-new buses coming, coming at a perfect time. And we had funds available that we hadn't spent. And so we programmed those funds and started ordering vehicles because, well, with some of the struggles with TCR TA, the cash flow was a struggle. So buying nine new buses is about a seven million dollar project that you are reimbursed after they're delivered. And so that was one, that was a big struggle for that agency as it was still trying to grow, still trying to understand, you know, each direction. But now, now we have full control of it.
Well, and we're still going to complement the wider TCR TA services in a, in a good way. And it's unique to Porterville. Could you talk about the, I think this is part of that, is to get it on the record is, part of the problems with TCR TA is a lot of the equipment that we bought didn't work, right?
Well, there wasn't much, to be clear, there wasn't much equipment being bought. We, you know, Porterville was an extremely good partner as a member of TCR TA. Our fare collection system was shared with them to utilize. We had, we had been a leader in this area for, for a long time. And so, yeah, now, there was an investment in fare collection, but they utilized a lot of our technology to lower the total investment countywide for fare collection.
Just one follow-up, just for clarification. I, the rumor was that we had bought a number of buses that didn't work and there was a warranty issue. Will we ever get any recovery on that or is this going to be written off?
Eleven electric buses. Continue, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so that particular project was funded by the state a hundred percent. There was no other funding, no general fund put in, into that project. We're working with that vendor. Contractually, they should be still supporting that fleet. However, it's been a struggle. I think this is an area that we need to spend some time because I would say ninety-five percent of those buses haven't moved for a couple of years. And there's been a failure to maintain them by the, by the vendor.
I'm hoping we can find something there. So I want to keep that issue alive and go after that. If there's a way to recover, to replenish this enterprise fund, if grant money's going to dry up, we need to get some recovery.
Yeah, and that particular project was a pilot. And so what the state had asked the city to do was try this new technology out for a minimum of two years. And then after the two-year period, the, the city was free to either continue to operate those vehicles or dispose of them. So that's the crux of it as far as the, the funding. It went towards a pilot to try the technology out. And we documented that pilot for two years.
This pilot is based out of China?
The, the pilot was funded out of the California Air Resources Board. Because there was a big push for transit agencies.
Where was the company from?
The, the company is, is a Delaware company, my understanding. They were based in Porterville. There was an intention to, to manufacture buses in Porterville, but that never realized, that never happened. The vehicles were manufactured in China. We would go over there every couple of months to inspect them. And then when they're ready to, when we gave the approval to ship them, they would, they would be shipped to Porterville and then we would put them into service.
Gotcha. Is this something that we get to a point where we sue over? Or for not getting the, the proper service or life expectancy out of these buses? Or is it something we just walk away from?
Um, well, I, I will say that there's a contractual agreement still in place with that vendor. And we can discuss more in detail what the, the council's desire is and, and maybe in closed session.
Gotcha. Well, and I'd just like to state for the record, I fought hard to get us out of TCR TA and to restore local control on transit in these things. Now, I was thinking here, looking at the budget, that in twenty-four is kind of when you hit the ground running. And so that's why we saw such an increase as you're a great grant writer. But it turns out it's, it's the opposite. But.
I still.
Good work, Mr. Tree.
Grant writer, but.
Yeah. Is there any other comments from the council?
I was just, a brief comment was, I, I saw a quick article, I didn't read the whole thing thoroughly, but the president, well, the state of California has a mandate about electrical vehicles. And I know the president was trying to like override that. Is that something that will eventually impact? Is that something that will eventually impact us? And I know, going back to a little bit of the comment about the buses, I think part of the answer is that it's the states, the state paid for them. So the city really doesn't have any skin in the game to, I mean, other than fight to get them to work. It's not our money, so we really aren't the person that who's been harmed. It was the state.
Well, it would still be grant funds that would go back. Say they pay us back on the buses that aren't working. Those grant funds would go into our, our budget or proposed budget in the future and give us more flexibility to do things like roadwork, which be, would be great for the City of Porterville.
I think because there's a pilot program, not necessarily a grant that way. That's not like a long-term grant. It was just a one-time. I think because Porterville, which is very unusual for a small town, had the infrastructure for electric buses. A lot of cities even, you know, hundreds of thousands of people don't ha- didn't have the infrastructure. Porterville was, was unique in that way that we had the infrastructure. But, I mean, it, it might be semantics. It just, I don't think that was a long-term fund.
It's definitely something worth having a discussion with our city attorney and.
Well, I would just make a statement. In business with a first mover advantage, sometimes you get the market, you make the money. In government, first mover advantage doesn't pay. So it looks like this pilot program failed miserably. CARB is now bankrupt going into next year. And, and to your point, Councilman Beltran, the, um, Calif- California's trying to hang on to that mandate. It's gone. It's over. And they're actually going to roll back smog checks. They'll probably turn them into safety inspections now because they won't let it go. But that was causing the whole infrastructure and the, the vehicle industry to go towards where California was going. And now that's not going to happen. So they're changing course and I think that was a great point to bring up. I know it doesn't affect us locally that much probably, but it's good to get on the record and know that we are changing course and diesel fuel is probably the most effective way to go. And, and I, I really like the CNG approach because that's, that's very effective as well. Electric doesn't seem to work.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that was kind of the point of the comment was that having local control again where we have that flexibility going forward where we have these upfront costs. And thankfully for the enterprise fund, we had the money to, to purchase those buses. But going forward, I think we'll be a little bit more efficient than other municipalities.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we can move forward.
Yeah, I just, on page 93, sorry. Had a, a pause for a minute. Apologies. I did, did want to highlight, so historically, the Transit Department has not advertised very much. And as we have done a tremendous amount of outreach through our short-range transit plan, it was, it was identified an area that we need to bring more information to the public. And so there's a considerable effort in advertising. That could be sponsorships of community civic events, it's, and, and other activities. And so Transit wants to get the word out, to advertise the services that we provide. And this is an area that we haven't invested in historically ever, very little money in advertising. But now there's a focus on spreading the word about our services and, and hope that people utilize it and utilize it more moving forward.
I love it.
All right, another element that really can affect the Transit Department is our insurance and liability. We are a member of a joint powers authority called Caltip, where there's 30-plus transit agencies that have come together to, to fund their insurance. Larger vehicles, a lot of people on vehicles, insurance. This is an area that we're seeing insurance costs have, have really increased for public transportation. And therefore, our budget for insurance has increased. The next couple of pages are just broken down, kind of like what Parks does is depending on the services that it's providing. On page 94 is really the total, 1.5 million is the projected expense for all the administrative costs to operate transit. Page 96, we don't provide on-demand service for the City of Woodlake anymore, so that's going away. But we do provide ADA paratransit service. That is required by law. We're projected to spend 440,000. That has increased mainly because we're fare-free. And so the, the senior citizens and disabled populations have taken advantage of that. And so this is in response to fare-free. We had to increase our service level. Microtransit service, it's misleading in the two years under TCR TA because those costs aren't there. But starting in 2021 and then moving forward, there's been a, a, a big investment in microtransit service. That's an area that has not changed based on our latest service modifications. So that figure will stay at 1.2 million for the total cost. That's including the maintenance of the vehicles and the contracted services. On page 97, I do want to highlight, based on our service modifications that have been approved, this particular page will be adjusted. This has not been updated quite yet. But that's for our fixed route service.
Yeah, keep rolling, Mr. Tree.
Moving on, the, the chiefs have talked about safety grants, starting on page 98. The first one up is the special safety grants. Chief Casella, do you want to highlight any, anything on the safety grant on page 99? And 100? Uh, page 100 is the COPS grant.
Yeah, I spoke about this a little bit earlier in my budget presentations. But that is our federal COPS grant. It funds two community service officers currently. And we're anticipating that funding of around 187,000. And that's through the, the U.S. Department of Justice, a community-oriented policing grant. So if you have any questions?
No, I, I think we could kind of speed through these. These are on record for anyone that's watching. They could download this and look at it if they want to look at some of these grants. Is the council okay with that as far as going forward? So, continue on, Mr. Tree.
Yeah, maybe we'll pause at page 106 just to highlight the Safer Grant. It was a limited three-year grant for, only for new employees. That, that funding cycle has now ended. And, and those expenses for, for those new employees are being shifted to Measure I. No questions on these special grants? We'll then turn our attention to the enterprise fund of Sewer on page 108. With the rate increases, the, the main item to take a look at is the sewer service charges have increased due to new rate, projecting at 11.5 million. Much like transit, you'll see operating, but you're not going to see the capital projects. Because that's the, all the capital projects that are programmed with, with the addition of the new, addition of, of revenue. All of the infrastructure projects are going to be displayed. And, and we'll walk you through in our July 22 meeting, the capital improvement program. But did want to highlight that we're projecting 11.5 million in revenues for the sewer operating fund. The next page, one, minor blending, but it goes into the operating fund with salaries and then traditional expenses that we've, line by line, that are similar to the rest of the departments. Maybe a couple highlights is some continued investment in vehicle depreciation for vehicles down the road as well as. I did want to highlight page two, our account ending in 280, administrative expenses. And those are the interdepartmental charges that, that the, essentially, finance department and other, primarily finance department to support the enterprise fund, we charge, right now it's 8% to, 9%. Sorry, thank you, 9%. This is an area that internally we're discussing. If, if, it hasn't been changed in some time, but maybe we raise that a percentage or two as their departments have grown.
It, it, so just for clarification, the relationship between the enterprise and the general fund is an administrative relationship, right? So that current percentage, whatever that is, I think it's 9%, whatever it is, that hasn't been changed in some time. So with inflation and operations and salaries and benefits and all of those things increasing, that needs to be adjusted. I think that's one of the things we need to talk about in more detail because that's going to help us to, to close some of the deficits and some of the gaps that we're seeing. Because I think it's, it's time to do that. I think it's past time to do that. Let's say that. And there's also a.
Franchise fee.
It's a fran- is a franchise also, and we discussed.
Yes, sir.
Briefly. Those are opportunities. I'm not sure how much the dollar values are on those. But for the public's sake, to understand this relationship between the enterprise and the admin, which is on the, the general fund side, there's an opportunity there to close some gaps if we can reevaluate based on, let's call it inflation, right?
Well, and just to add on that, and, and for the franchise fee is around 4%?
Yeah, it's a fixed amount rather than a percentage. But if you look at a percentage, it's, I think we calculated about 4%. But in reality, it's a fixed amount that has not changed.
So just like the rates that, that were raised, and this is in each enterprise, right? We're talking water, sewage, and, and.
Refuse.
Refuse, thank you. With these rate increases in each department, I think each one of these, the administrative expense and the franchise fee should be looked at as well in each department. As we go through, we're going to see this in each one. And so this is something that with those rate and fees also should be paying back the city on, just like the Parks and Leisure pays for the tree tree water and the utilities. It's, it's only right. So it's something we definitely want to evaluate and look at in the future here, the short future.
It seems to be out of balance, and I think that's going to help us to review that.
Okay, and, and just highlighting in the next couple of pages, under the sewer, we have the wastewater treatment facility. We have the laboratory for testing. That's all under the sewer. And then page 113 is, the transfer of funds is, is that item? If you wanted to know what, what is, what does it mean when we identify transfer to other funds? That's funds being transferred to the capital improvement project list and some additional fees for the sewer department. And then on 114 is the equipment replacement or depreciation. The next page, 115, is the wastewater treatment, capital reserve. Again, investments in capital projects that will be further discussed on, at the meeting in July 22.
Okay.
Similar kind of structure with solid waste, but did want to recognize that we, we break.
Mr. Tree, before we, and I, I know Assistant City Manager Knight would be the perfect person to. So as far as the rates on this, being that the, the people don't pay for tree tree water, this isn't necessarily a 218 process, and, and I'm, I'm just assuming here. This is something the council can look at, being that currently all we're selling to is ourselves. Possibly lowering, looking at a different way of addressing this?
Yeah, there's technically two users on the, with the tertiary plant.
The casino, that's correct.
The casino and the city, so I think.
But we are the biggest user and that, that's something going back to the public works area where we, we seen a huge increase out at the sports complex.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just throwing it out there, and, and I don't know what the legal is on that. And we'd also want Assistant City Manager Knight's input, but just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, and I would see, when we look at the capital improvement project list, there's significant effort to expand, we call it purple pipe, which is the, the piping that will eventually be connected to the wastewater treatment facility out at the sports complex. But also, we have plans with the current wastewater treatment facility to be able to produce recycled water out of there, extending recycled water throughout the community. So if you see purple pipe being put in, that's, we're planning for the future. And it's better use of that water. We're, you know, use it two or three times. Whereas a traditional potable water, use it one time. So long-term sustainability plan that we're making an investment in.
Okay.
Turning our attention to solid waste, I think what's important to note on the revenue side is we do break that out between residential refuse charges, commercial refuse charges, and, and roll-off refuse charges. And that there's, there's been some increases due to the new rate structure to support the solid waste department or division. And moving into the operating side, we do break that up to, so the first operating budget that we're taking a look at is on 119, which is the refuse collection and disposal.
Can I stop you just for a second? So I want to make a statement about the, the solid waste. There's a structural problem here with the way this works that is out of our control. The state mandates that we do a certain amount of recycling and we, they threaten us with a fine, which is $10,000 a day penalty if we don't comply. And with the additional miles going out to the new dump site. What I want to get on the record is this. We've probably sucked up about $10 million in expense over the last 10 years in complying with the state mandate. And when I say sucked it up, I mean the people have paid for it. Because in the, they have taken, that comes out of our rates and the people have paid for it. But the state has mandated. And so what I would say to those that are listening or those that are watching at home, if you are a ratepayer in Porterville and you also vote, let's, let's talk about where you're putting your vote at the state level. Because the state is causing us, along with some of these other things, to, our services cost more money because they mandate it. And it's costing everybody, every ratepayer has to pay that. And it's about $10 million. We're talking about a $10 million deficit and an unfunded liability. This would pay for that, too, as we make these comparisons to try to put them in perspective. The people have really had to, to pay the, the, the weight of that. And I think that it's important to get that on the record because we have to do it. And we have to charge them for it.
And, and just to clarify, what you're putting on record is blue cans to black cans. I, I like what the campaign needs to be, or I got the slogan already, is make blue cans black again. And, and the, the reason why you're, you're pointing that out and getting on record with it is because the, the material from blue cans ends up going to the dump anyways.
Right.
And, and so it's just a farce to make you feel good.
Yes.
That you're recycling, but it's not actually happening. And is there any clarification on that? Is, we're, we're speaking factually here?
No, I talked to, I talked to Julia to study what we might be able to do about that. So she's going to bring something back to all of us. But the, the point here is that they stopped recycling. We don't get the revenue for it, and that's the shortfall. And so the city's had to suck it up and it's, and then sucked up in the rates. And so we do know that, and the rumor is that they're storing some of this trash, which is a crazy idea, too.
Yeah, and it, it really just depends on what the material is in there, but a lot of it goes to the dump. You know, they may be storing certain cardboards, but if it's got grease on it, it goes to the dump.
Right.
So it just depends.
To comment on your, your analogy on that, when I first got on the council, I asked Mr. Knight about the recycling. I would like to start that up. But he also told me that it, they don't recycle here in Porterville. So you are true when you say that's factual. So I wanted to implement it, but the state has regulated to the point where, like you said, it's just a farce. It's a ruse.
Yeah.
So with that, turn it over to you.
Good. One of the areas that we're actively working on, we call, it's a project called Route Wear. You, you'll notice in our overtime salaries for refuse is, is quite high. Projected at 245,000. This is when you can use technology to improve operations and be more efficient. This project is currently under the works that will be able to take a look at our current route structure, look for ways to improve it, be able to communicate more clearly and respond to customers, quick, more, in a quicker fashion. Route Wear is, is, is going to be a really good project, not only for our operation, to help lower the operating costs, but also improve our customer service.
Yeah, so it's if we can use. Yeah, so it's if we can use software, Route Wear, to give us some advantages on where where we're spending our miles and how many trips and all of those things, maybe we can eke out some savings. I like that.
Yep, yep, that's the goal. Moving on, on page one twenty is our green waste budget. There's some salaries involved now. With the with the enterprise fund, between sewer, solid waste, water, there's there's about seventy-two total employees under the enterprise fund. I I don't have the figure to give you exact numbers for for green waste at this time, but we can definitely provide you that information here in the near future. But the big expense on green waste is, again, continuing to to support our vehicle depreciation and vehicle maintenance. That's projected at three hundred and twenty thousand. And then the professional temp service at four hundred and forty thousand, that's, we have a transfer center, so we collect it, and then we bring it to our corporation yard. You'd use a transfer center, and then we have a subcontractor to come haul it away. And hopefully Assistant City Manager Knight can correct me if I'm, if I said anything wrong. On page one twenty-one is our street sweeping program. If there's any questions there.
I was going to comment briefly on the green waste. If I can remember right, I think there was a discussion on looking at developing a capital project where we would do the green waste possibly at the corporation yard, maybe a facility. So that expenditure and that element would be a lot smaller, but again, with all the other budget constraints we're looking at, that might be something just down the road instead of sooner than later, but that is something that the city is looking at.
That's true, yeah. Be represented in our capital improvement plan that we'll talk about more in depth on in July. We further broke down solid waste into curbside recycling collections and then recyclable waste. Be honest, I I don't know the difference between the two, I apologize, and Mr. Knight would have cleared this up pretty quickly. But I don't have any notes on that one, apologies, but curbside recycling collection is is estimated at five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And
Might that be the one at the corporation yard where people pull up? I don't know if that's would be part of that, curbside drop off?
It could be.
Could be. I'll get further clarification, my apologies.
Are you referring to when you just drive up and drop off your cardboard, your paper, your plastic, Mr. Beltran?
Yeah. I think that might be it, yeah.
I would, I would think that one in particular might be the recyclable waste budget.
Keep rolling.
All right, we're keeping rolling. On page one twenty-four is our graffiti removal. Just want to highlight that we contract with the Porterville Shelter Workshop to support us in these efforts. There is some graffiti removal efforts performed by staff, but we do utilize Porterville Shelter Workshop. And then it goes into the equipment replacement for solid waste. And then we're on to airport. I think the big thing on airport is the the revenue generator for the airport is fuel cells. And we're projecting two million in in fuel cells to to our contractors such as CalFire and the forestry and and other airplane users, but primarily it's 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 our big, big planes. And our largest expense for the airport is is fuel cells, so if you look at the two projected to have revenue of two million, but the expense to purchase that fuel is one point six million. So generates about four hundred thousand to help support the airport. Other revenues that support the airport is hangar leases and a ground lease agreements. Some modest ink revenue there. Expenses, I think there are three full ti- three employees out at the airport, two full-time, one part-time. And then the standard maintenance and other items that are similar to the rest of the departments. We do have some capital projects planned for the airport, primarily funded by the FAA, federal government, with some local support coming from the state, specifically Caltrans, Division of Aeronautics. And then there there could be a local match depending on the particular grant coming from the airport operating fund. The project that we'll highlight, that we'll speak about in the July meeting, but we're going to be making some significant improvements to our airport lighting the airport. Moving on to the golf course, I know Donnie has spoken quite a bit about the golf course, but I'll turn it over to him if there's any questions.
I think on the golf course, you already kind of touched on usually around a three hundred or so thousand loss at the moment. Revenues for this current fiscal year are actually tracking a little bit lower, so that's why you'll see some of that up there. So hopefully that will improve. On the expenditure side, the big one, again, is this utilities, is a big expense out there, it's no secret, just like everywhere else as far as parks goes, that's the big one. And then staff's just looking at, you know, some different options to help with this deficit here, so we'll be, everything will be on the table, so we're just work working hard at that already.
And we used three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to redo the nets, and that was ARPA funds, apologize, just to put that on record.
You're correct.
Three hundred and thirteen thousand to redo the driving course.
The driving range, yes.
The driving range, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the golf course? I think we've we've covered it and gone on record with the issues, and and we're going to have to, it's it's not self-sustaining, it is not, we're going to have to, via the audit, we have to change the way we're doing business, it's structurally not sound, and so we have to tie it to Parks and Leasures and fund it that in that fashion. So moving on to water?
Moving on to water, and I'm not the water expert, but I'll walk us through the the revenue side, projecting at fifteen point one million. Not a not a significant change on the revenue side for for water, because the the rates that were passed focused on the the sewer portion of it. We have wa- within the water division, we have water distribution expenses totaling nine point five million. We have water meter readings and customer service is four hundred and thirty-three thousand in expenses. Primarily, it's it's the staff, the meter readers, that are funded out of this department. Quality, water quality assurance, we have some staff that perform that, as well as you know, vehicle maintenance and some professional temp services that are listed, that budget expenses five hundred and sixty-five thousand.
For the administrative expense, is it nine percent in each one of these enterprises?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on to, oh, go ahead?
Yeah. That nine percent is based off of the revenues and those enterprise funds.
Gotcha, thank you. And with us going three days water, and we should see an increase in that revenue.
On page one forty-two, we're getting to the near, the end of it, and Mr. Knight will be able to bring some clarity to the water and sewer and refuse. But moving on to hydrant testing, budget, expenditure budget of four hundred and forty-six thousand. Recycle water expense budget of three hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred, some staff time. And then we go into water replacement fund and the equipment replacement fund for the water division.
Okay, moving on to risk management?
Risk management, I'll turn the time over to you, Leanna.
Thank you. So for risk management, we have seen for the past ten, fifteen years where revenues are tracking lower, we'll be working to lessen the deficit, hopefully by increasing the percentages that departments contribute to these funds. The risk management division employs one full-time employee and two employees charge fifty percent out of their administration costs. This division mitigates risk and manages claims. This account has seen a steep increase over the last ten, fifteen years. The risk management budget pays for liability and litigation costs. We have seen an increase in property coverage, workers' compensation, employee medical and employment practices, which includes litigation costs. For property coverage, insurance coverage costs have increased. Additionally, as the city acquires properties, the cost goes up because we have to insure those. In workers' compensation, these claims have increased over the past five years, specifically in the public safety departments. For employee medical, the city is self-insured, which means we pay for all claims until they meet the stop-loss amount, which was at a hundred and sixty thousand, but we recently increased it to a hundred and ninety thousand to reduce our monthly premium costs, which those were reduced by about two hundred thousand, so we are working to try to get closer to where we need to be. The number of this slide item is claim-driven, so we don't really know what to expect, because it's all based on incoming claims that we get for each covered individual. We are looking at different options, though, to try to decrease that. For employment practices, these accounts pay for litigation, which are claims that sometimes turn into meritless lawsuits, but the city still spends money on defending these lawsuits. This budget fluctuates depending on the number of claims that the city receives per fiscal year. And I'm available if you have any other questions on any other line items.
Any questions for Yuli? I'm not seeing any, let's keep moving on. Equipment maintenance?
Moving on, equipment maintenance, it's really our shop that maintains all of our vehicles, over three hundred pieces of equipment. It also includes the, our fuel islands, so we we purchase fuel and then charge it back to departments based on their use. So much like the airport, the the largest revenue generator for our shop is is selling fuel to various departments. And our largest expense is either outside services, so we try to perform most of the work in-house, but at times a transmission overhaul and engine rebuild will utilize outside services.
Is this considered an enterprise as well, under the enterprise?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
No, it's not.
It's not, it's an internal service fund, because it's it's internal transfers that we do to charge to departments.
Okay, thank you.
So which one is the outside services, what line? What page is that?
Yeah, it's on page one fifty-four, account ending in
Yeah, two five zero.
Two five zero, outside automotive.
That's a big number. It'd be interesting to review that line and see if there's some things we can in-source.
Interesting.
I really like that there's a two million dollar, I don't know if it's just something simple or what, if it's not, we should review it.
Yeah, could, is that just for engine repair?
No, it could be bodywork, paint and body, we don't have a paint shop, and that comes with a lot of regulations that, so we don't have that in-house.
And that's all departments?
All departments, over three hundred pieces of equipment.
Fire trucks, trash trucks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we do the standard work and maintenance for vehicles in-house, but there's at times we need to outsource, yeah. Any questions on the shop itself? There's, much like the rest of the department? No, we're a little bit higher, I'll go, Yuli.
I believe there's about five employees.
Yeah.
And that's, it's fully staffed?
Yes, they're now fully staffed. It was hard to get there, but we're there.
I think they're one mechanic short, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last section of this proposed budget is landscape maintenance and lighting districts. There's approximately seventy-seven of those, there's quite a bit of pages. Maybe to note on landscape and lighting districts is, we just, we're going to be holding a public hearing specifically on landscape and lighting districts. Every year we hold a hearing. It should be a net zero for for these districts or whatever, the revenue that we charge are being assessed, sorry, on their property, it pays for the ongoing maintenance of those lighting districts. We could have, happy to answer any questions on on this, but thought we'd streamline this section, the next thirty pages or so, because it's an annual public hearing.
Could Donnie go through each one?
Sure. July fifteenth, our next council meeting, this will be the public hearing, so the public will get a chance to
Beautifully done, Mr. Moore. Okay, well, I'd just like to say thank you to staff for doing this, this line by line, learned a lot today. It brings some clarification, it also points out some of the structural issues that we need to change and and address. And we have the team to do it, I know we do. So with that, I'll pass off. Vice Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'm giving Fernando a moment.
Okay, then.
Want to do some
Councilman Beltran, do you have?
Summary discussion.
Thank you for all the directors and all your input and and responses and finance department. I know this is a a big project for you guys, so thank you for all the diligent work you guys do behind the scenes.
Yes, Councilman Rivas?
Yes, so all I want to say is thank you for for bringing this out to us and explaining everything in great detail. And I appreciate you guys' time and effort for for bringing it out. And I know we have the right people to do it, and I know you guys are going to do it, because I have the utmost confidence in you. You guys will work together, and and the next time we meet, then we'll we'll get some more figures and numbers to look at, and we'll we'll talk about them and open forum and and for the session, so, but other than that, I appreciate everything that you guys have done, and it looks really good, it looks very professional, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Councilman Green?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for filling my evening, because I didn't have anything scheduled for tonight, and I was just glad to show up. But it was interesting, folks, thanks, I really appreciated it. You didn't even bore me tonight, and I appreciate it. All right, thanks, guys.
Vice Mayor?
All right, well, you know, I pushed for this since the beginning, since I got elected, and you know, being a finance guy somewhat, I really need to understand the the world of the of the city government through finance, and now we're getting it. Thank you very much for the line by line. I know it's tedious, I know it's a lot. I, it just going through here, it's generating a lot of good discussion. It's giving us transparency for the people so they can see it. I know a lot of people can look this up, but now it's on YouTube, so if someone engages us and asks us about finances, we can say, hey, go look at this session that we had, and then we'll have a discussion about the finances, but we're identifying structural issues from the past, we're trying to anticipate some expenses in the future. Getting a good financial understanding is something that every organization has to have a good handle on, or they don't last. And so I really appreciate the time that everyone has spent, and as we focus on this, I know that, you know, we have a tendency to do things better when we focus on them, so getting this focus on the finances is good for the city. Salary and benefits and utilities are up for everybody, it's it's not a surprise, especially in the in the city that it's up. I think that we might want to discuss, you know, the targets as we go forward. Five percent, you know, is the past targets, I think fifteen percent is probably a stretch goal that we should all talk about as far as moving forward to try to make up for these structural deficits that we've identified. Getting the ARPA funds out there so everybody understands where we spent twenty million dollars is important. We need to have some more discussions about that. I did try to make some comparisons for the layman, for the people out there, because understanding the enterprise budget just for transportation segment is almost as much as our general fund, and so there's a, there's some understanding there that is helpful for the public when we have discussions about money. I wanted to make a really good comparison about these deficits and talk about the golf course. I mean, this is a known issue for generations. And to put that off and not pay for that, that's, you know, that's, that's not a good thing. So we got to call that out and say, let's fix that. When you add those things together, when we talk about the unfunded healthcare and the unfunded golf course, you know, and the liabilities are in the thirteen million dollar range, and you compare that to, you know, where we spent the money in the ARPA funds, that's in the thirteen million dollar range, it's a good comparison to say, hey, we got to make sure we don't make the same mistakes, we got to make sure we fill in the hole that was dug for us. We have to face this, and we have to come up with some solutions, because if we focus on service and we focus on results because if we focus on service and we focus on results and we focus on outcomes, we will get a fifteen percent improvement and we'll get better service at the same time. And then this is what we do in business all the time, every year. It may not be applied in government as often, but, um, we oversee this. This is how you stay in business. And the small businesses around our community will understand that. And our economy will benefit from that. And I think that we'll actually get, um, some excellent results if we're all focused on this together. So what I love about the line by line is we all got together, we looked at it. We understand that better. We're starting to talk in a finance way. We can talk about it with the public that way. And then we can start to look at how we can make things better. And it doesn't mean that, um, you know, we have to cut muscle. Let's cut the fat. Let's figure out how we can streamline some things, but focusing on results. And I think that we can get there. We're going to have to make some hard decisions based on the gaps and the structures that we found. But, uh, understanding where we're spending the money and how we're spending the money, just reevaluating the percentage from enterprise to the general fund is going to give us a kiss. Understanding how we might get some money back from Armory, uh, through the FEMA, uh, through the reimbursement from the county, that can help us because we've already spent some of that money. So we got to identify those things. And we got to be smart about it because I, I, I don't want to just say, hey, the guys that were here before sucked and they were bad leaders. They did the best they could, but we're still in a situation where we have inherited a mess and we've got a hole we got to fill. The goal is to understand where we are so we can start the next budget on the right footing and so that we can start working on our economy and start knowing where we can spend the money and how we make money as a city and provide that best services. A lot of conversations that are still happening around the city about how hard it is to get things done. If we can improve the service and reduce the expense at the same time, that's where we go. And that's why I really wanted to press for this financial review, line by line, to help educate the public, to be transparent about that and set some expectations that our city is going in a new direction. After the last election, we've changed, uh, three of the councilmen and we're going to go in a new direction now. And we have some new leadership with our interim city manager, which is the fourth city manager in four years. And, uh, we're really excited about the opportunity to re-engage in a new way with new people, how we can make the city better and provide better results and better service. And that's why I wanted to pull this together. It's a great conversation and it's, um, I think it's kind of taken on its own momentum now. And so great, great discussion with everybody this evening. And, um, I think that, um, I, I think that we, we, we will continue to grow and prosper as we focus on the financials and the levers that drive that change. And it's a continuous improvement ideology that we have to get to. We can always do better in everything. And so let's continue to think out of the box. Let's be creative. There are solutions and things. We can't just be fixed in our mindset. We got to be open-minded about where we're going to go as a city so that we can take advantage of opportunities. That's what I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I appreciate you pushing forward with this. And you're the philosophical one, is what I like to say. So some would say it's a little preachy, but I don't mind. And ultimately, from our positions and what, what we ran on door-knocking, is that we no longer want to be just ceremonial positions. We want to be involved in the budget. And this is the first time in Porterville's history where we did a line by line and went deep into the budget and we brought transparency to the people. And I think we all campaigned on that. Um, with that, we'll end it. Uh, uh, City Manager, do you have any comments?
I'll be brief. Um, today marks the, the completion of my first thirty days as being the interim city manager. I, I hope, um, that this study session was both educational for the public, but the, the city council. I hope that we, um, provided the level of detail that you expected. And I just want to say, I, I could not have done it by myself. I, huge shout out to all the department heads and especially our finance director. I didn't realize, um, what it took to put this budget together, how labor-intensive it is. Um, and, um, look forward to continuing to serve the council. I do appreciate, and I think the staff appreciates, um, interacting with the council more as we prepare this budget to get feedback, get direction. It, at the end of the day, it's a budget that the council adopts. We just help prepare it. Um, and so it's, we appreciate the involvement.
Okay, thank you. Well, meeting's adjourned at nine oh two.